I'd like to call to order the November 7th Planning Commission meeting. If we can start with roll call, please.
Chair Hutt, Vice Chair Dennison.
Here.
Commissioners Cottolato.
Here.
Dallas.
Here.
Desai.
Here.
Hevzner and Spears.
Present.
All right. I will take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Next, we'll move to approval of the minutes. The minutes of the August 1st, 2019 meeting. Are there any edits, corrections, changes?
I was not here, so I'm gonna back out of that one and the next one.
Okay.
But I think we're, we should be open.
So we've got two of the four people that were there, so I think we have a quorum for those minutes, so we can go ahead and vote on it if they both vote in the affirmative, is my understanding. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Great. Getting these off the calendar here.
So who moved?
So...
I just said I had no objection.
Okay.
I'll move.
Okay, so moved. Is there a second?
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those recusing yourself?
Right here, me, for the first two, then the third, October 3rd.
I will go one at a time.
I'll go one at a time, okay.
Great, so that was for the August 1st. So that has been approved. For the September 19th, 2019 Planning Commission, are there any changes, corrections, edits, additions?
No objection.
I believe that the same group will be needed for this. Is there a motion?
Also move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those recusing?
Me again.
So moved. Last set of minutes, October 3rd. On line 99, I think chair is spelled wrong. Other than that, I didn't have any comments. Any other comments?
I'm recusing on that one.
Okay. Take a motion?
Also move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those recusing? Great.
That worked out.
We are, we've cleared these off. All right, at this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning an item that is not on the agenda. The Commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the Commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Is there anybody that would like to step forward and comment on something not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the public hearings.
So we have a design review permit and a second unit permit for the Planning Commission's review this evening. That staff report will be delivered by Assistant Planner Joshua Wolfe. We do have a PowerPoint presentation for you as well.
Good evening, Vice Chair and Commissioners. Tonight, the Commission will be reviewing design review permit and second unit permit for the property located at 661 Mariposa Avenue. The applicant is requesting to construct an addition of 1,147 and a half square feet to the rear of the single-family residence. A design review is required because the proposed cumulative floor area for, will exceed 3,500 square feet. A historic resource evaluation report was conducted for the property, which deemed the property not eligible for historic landmark designation. The applicant is also requesting to construct an addition of 234 square feet to the detached recreation room at the rear of the property, and also to be legalized as a second unit. As a reminder, all applications for second units are to be considered ministerially unless they are part of another application, which would be reviewed by the Planning Commission. The property is located in the western portion of Sierra Madre, south of Sierra Madre Boulevard, and is adjacent to single and multifamily dwellings. The lot is fairly large at 23,102 square feet, or approximately one-half of an acre. So the project proposes, as highlighted in orange at the rear of the property on the site plan here, the existing floor area of the single-family residence dwelling is 2,723 square feet. The covered patio is 93.75 square feet, and the garage is 455 square feet. The proposed addition is 1,147 and a half square feet for a total on the primary residence of 4,419.25 square feet. The accessory structure existing is 216 square feet. The new addition adds on 234 square feet for a total of 450 square feet to that second unit. The total gross floor area for the lot proposed is 4,869.25 square feet, which comes just under 100 square feet short of the maximum allowable floor area for the property. Photographs of the front and rear elevations show that the majority of the structure does take up a lot of the width of the property, leaving small setbacks on both the front and rear. The proposed addition seeks to be located where the trellis structure currently lies, at the rear of the property. It will be setback from the side setback line at 10 feet. It will cover the area of the trellis located here, as well as the barbecue area. The front elevation, the, the project seeks to also renovate this front, one of the front entrances on the left here. There's one entrance, and on the right, there is a second entrance. The proposed project is to widen the front entrance area and add side lights, along with removing these architectural features. There's another view of the front entrance right here. A neighborhood analysis shows that the proposed project within a 300-square-foot radius of single-family homes within the area, the proposed project falls within, falls above the top, the average top one-third by 900 square feet, and is 1840 square feet above the average of all residential properties within the area. The exist, or I'm sorry, the proposed floor area would market at number two of the top houses within a 300-foot radius. So summary of the project. The lot size will not be changing. The lot coverage will increase from 15% to roughly 21%. Building height will not change at 20 feet and 4 inches. The gross floor area will be increased from 3,488 existing to 4,869.25 square feet proposed, at a required 4,952 square feet. Setbacks will remain the same for the most part. The proposed side yard setback for the addition will be the required 10 feet minimum. And the parking will propose one open space for the accessory dwelling unit. Site plan shown, existing on the left, shows location for the addition to be on this back patio area. Highlighted in orange on the right, proposed site plan area. The addition for the ADU will go towards the center of the property, as shown highlighted in orange on the proposed site plan. Existing floor plan shows a front entrance area here on the left, one of two front entrances, the second being towards the right. This left one will be renovated and updated to include side lights. The rear portion is going to be where the addition is located. Walls here will be demolished. And the proposed floor plans show a new front entrance here, along with the addition including one master bedroom, one bathroom, and one hallway. With entrances, two new entrances into the garage, one into the hallway, and one double doorway from the rear yard. Existing recreation room is small at 216 square feet. The left wall here will be demolished to add on 234 square feet as living space for the accessory dwelling unit. It will also become equipped with a kitchen and bathroom facility. Existing roof plan as shown here features gable and hipped end roofs. The proposed addition will be a hip, I'm sorry, a gable-ended roof facing the rear of the property, extending towards the rear of the property. The front entrance roof line will be maintained as a single line for the roof plane. On our proposed elevations, we can see that the existing front entrance here will be removed and added on for a wider, more presentable front entrance doorway. The window into the bathroom at the front portion of the property will be removed and replaced with a more private window. And these architectural features at the roof line will be removed and modernized. The rear addition will also present a new ridge line on the right side of the property that will stick above the existing ridge line here, just a little bit. On the rear elevation, we can see this portion highlighted in orange would be removed and replaced with what is highlighted here in blue of the addition, including the entrances here on the left, which include divided light doors, three sets of windows, including divided light bottoms, which are awnings. The east elevation shows existing here on the top. The proposed is a projection towards the rear with new entrance on the side with divided light and a new privacy window for the bathroom proposed. On the west end of the elevation, this is where existing house kind of blocks view from the proposed addition, but you can see it projecting from this end as well. But we can see that the ridge line is below the top height of the highest point of this existing structure. And behind that, we can see more of where that double door entrance will be into the rear yard. For the proposed elevations on the ADU, we have the north elevation here. Doorway entrance leading out into the rear yard, along with two windows into the living area and a privacy window for the bathroom. The proposed south elevation has two windows reflecting from the north elevation, as well as a window into the kitchen area. The west elevation entrance has a double door entrance into the living area from the rear yard. And the east elevation faces the side property line, so it remains a solid feature to maintain privacy. Color elevations show materials to match existing colors and windows proposed to reference existing windows of divided light. There will also be six skylights, three on each roof plane. And our materials show that the existing blue is a custom Mariposa blue from Dunn Edwards Paints on traditional lapwood siding. The windows for the rear elevation will have, again, as I mentioned before, the bottom awning portion, which is divided light with a fixed casement window. The double doors leading out into the rear yard are French door style with divided light. And for the ADU, it'll have the archway window and skylights shown here. The roof will also be a charcoal black asphalt shake. And our findings for design review are required for approval. So the proposed project is consistent with the general plan designation for residential low density, and the objective as, the new addition remains as a single-family story, I'm sorry, single-story building. The proposed project is in the rear and is mostly not visible from public view besides the additional ridge line, and will not unreasonably interfere with the use, possession, and enjoyment of surrounding adjacent properties. The height, bulk, scale, mass, and siding of the proposed project will remain similar to the existing structure from public view, and is compatible with the existing neighborhood, landforms, and surroundings. The proposed single-story project reflects the scale of the neighborhood, does not visually overpower or dominate the neighborhood, and is not ill proportioned. The proposed project is 18 feet and 9 inches from natural grade. It neither unreasonably interferes with the public views or the views of, and privacy of neighbors, produces unreasonable noise levels, nor causes material adverse impacts. The proposed project, which is a ranch architecture style, remains coherent with the existing structure and is compatible and references other portions of the existing structure. The proposed project is not seeking relief from development standards. And lastly, proposed project does require discretionary review due to exceeding size thresholds of 3,500 square feet. Needs to show that it is a superior project that would enhance its neighborhood and exhibit exceptional design through a combination of, of most, if not all, of the following. Proposed project is a thoughtful, is thoughtful that it remains as a one-story structure. The rear addition is not visible from public view and maintains the existing ranch-style architecture. It is not generic or cookie cutter. The proposed project seeks to adapt by replacing the unused and dilapidated back patio trellis and barbecue area, as well as updating and refurbishing features on the front elevation and the front entrance area. The propos, I'm sorry, the proposed project is mindful of the protected oak tree on site and will take measures to protect them during the construction. Siding and structures in keeping with landforms and so as to not maximize open space, public views, or neighbor views and privacy by preserving the existing front and rear yard setbacks. Side yard is at the required 10 feet, and it also is occupying only 21% of the lot, where 40% is the requirement. A high quality of architectural detail and building materials compatible with the overall project design by my, by maintaining and the existing ranch architectural aesthetic and sustainable building and landscaping practices, especially water-saving features, in that the project will comply with applicable building codes to satisfy sustainable building requirements. Tonight, the Planning Commission can approve design review permit and the second unit permit pursuant to Planning Commission Resolution 1912. They can approve design review permit and second unit permit with modifications. They can deny the design review permit identifying the findings that the Planning Commission feels cannot be made and the basis for rejecting those findings. Or it can continue the project and provide the staff and applicant with direction. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve design review permit 1909 and second unit permit 1912 with attached conditions of approval. Any questions?
Yes. You didn't show the site plan. We, I believe we just got this arborist report.
That is correct.
Just, just now. The addition overlaps with what's indicated here as the drip line of that, of that one oak tree. And could you, this is too much to read right while you're talking. Could you discuss that with us? And, and where's the, you know, where's the crown of the tree relative to the roof?
And Joshua, if you could put up the site plan so we can reference that.
It's not, it's not shown in, the oak tree isn't shown in elevation, so I, I don't know what the potential interference is.
So we have our site plan right here, and the general location of the oak tree is right here.
The crown will extend, the building edge will be 10 feet from the trunk, and that crown will extend over the building.
Did we have, did we have a photograph anywhere that included that, that oak tree?
We do, and that's at the rear elevation there where that trellis is located.
Top photo here.
Is that the oak?
Yes, this is the oak tree right here.
What we're talking about. If the position is of, of the, of the trunk is, is correct on the plan, then the drip line extends way beyond what's indicated on the, on the site plan. In other words, way over the, way over the addition.
So in attachment H, we have a summary letter from the arborist on board, who is summarizing his observations for the oak tree on site.
Oh, here's the drawing. Page 18 on the handout shows the drip line of the tree.
That is correct.
You can, you can see there that the, that the, the lower foliage is, is only slightly, slightly above the eve height there. So I, I don't see how you can say that that addition is, is not interfering with the tree at all. I, I can't visualize this.
They'd have to take out that big branch, the lower big branch there.
Is that stated in the?
No, I didn't see that written down. I didn't read everything in here yet.
Is the plant to remove that branch?
I believe that the arborist had recommended pruning.
Which is shown on page 23 and 24 of the arborist report. But it's showing minimal pruning, not substantial pruning of the primary branches.
Yeah, it would certainly appear, doesn't it, that, that you're going to have to prune that tree much more heavily than is indicated here.
When I was at the site, that's the conclusion I came to, that branch would have to go. Fit the gable.
That, that entire
Lower branch.
Lower branch has to be removed.
If you look at page 20, is that the?
Right? The building's up in, up in here somewhere, right?
In addition, probably root pruning would be necessary for the foundation or hand-dug piles to be able to accommodate the footprint of that addition, or the Commission consider reducing the size of that addition, moving it away from the root zone.
Well, is it also, it's, I assume it's slab-on grade, right? It's not a raised foundation.
Yeah, I think they're gonna have to, to excavate a few feet in order. So it's gonna be below existing grade.
I mean, where the footings run into the roots, that's gonna have to be severed.
Yeah, even when you do take that lower branch off, it would appear that you still have very substantial
That's right.
Root, root pattern underneath, right? Because the next branches are just higher up, but are also, but are also leaning way over in that direction, aren't they?
That's right. My sense was clear. My concern is that the drawings don't have the existing finished grades on the property or the existing floor heights. So it's really impossible to tell where that addition's going to sit vertically in space. And the drawings indicate, make it look like it's only like a foot or so.
But it doesn't, it's, it's at least two feet when you get back there.
Yeah, that was visually what I felt, but that's not real, so I would, I would recommend before, you know, we need more information on that.
Because when you stand with that garage door at your back and you're looking up, the, the tree is elevated from where your feet are, by a couple feet. That's what I've, that's what I, my perception was.
So the addition would have to either come up, or, you know.
Or dig in.
Cut a ton of roots.
The... There is a, yeah. So two things. On page 21, there is an estimate from the arborist as to how much of the root would need to be excavated. And he makes the determination that he doesn't think it's that the impact of the construction should be less than significant. So that is the finding of the arborist with regards to the root.
Did he understand where the floor was going to be?
Is the arborist here?
He's not here tonight.
Okay.
I estimate approximately 18% of the tree's roots I estimate approximately eighteen percent of the tree's root system will be impacted. This tree is a good candidate for preservation and the impact of the construction should be less than significant.
Okay, so we can probably talk about that more when we bring it back to the council. Are there- would the applicants like to come before us and say any words or anybody?
Let me- I have one question just for staff. We have a site plan here, but was there an actual survey done, like a recorded survey with elevations, topography?
I do believe that there is a site survey. You have-
I wouldn't present it if it wasn't part of the program.
Okay, yeah. So there was one conducted, we just need to have the plans reduced.
We don't have it?
We don't have it.
You mean that included elevations?
Well, a survey would have at least spots or topography, right? It would've been good to have.
Yep. Are there other questions for staff?
There's one. The second unit qualifies for arena numbers?
Yes.
Does- is the access to the second unit spelled out on any of these drawings?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Is the access to the second unit spelled out on any of these drawings?
It's not delineated, but we look at the site plan, we can see that there is access from the side property.
On the east?
Correct, there's about six feet five inches here.
Yeah, the setback on that side is a little narrow, but then the addition is up to code.
Right, it's ten feet. The addition is ten feet from side property line, so there should still maintain access to the rear.
Okay, all right, that's fine, that's all I needed to know.
Any other questions of staff?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, would the applicants like to say anything or anybody in the galley?
Hi, how you doing? My name is Ramon Gallardo, the designer of the elaboration of the plans for Barbosa, who's unable to come here, which is the applicant and the contractor of the job. My understanding is the arborist went to see the job site and the gentleman here, he's right, it's about twenty-four inches of grade and it has to be regraded to keep the level of the existing house. And they said the recommendation of the trench for the new foundation has to be by hands and the depth of the roots, he believes within ten feet from the trunk to the addition, it will be deep enough not to find any roots on that time.
So is it a raised foundation system?
No, it's gonna be-
Slab-on-grade?
Slab-on-grade. Because if we do actually raise, it's gonna be more dirt to dig, so we're trying to keep the minimum grading possible. And I do believe that they have permits or they will plan it to trim the branches of the tree according with the recommendations of the arborists to comply with the federal law of the protection of the trees. And yes, it's also a surveyor done with the topography lines. It wasn't part of the requirements to submit, but we were willing to provide one to Josh, which has been really helpful to us.
So you have one, but it wasn't part of the packet?
It wasn't part of the requirements, yeah. It's been done, it will help.
I have a question. On the ADU, do you know that the owner's not here, but from a design standpoint, was there any contemplation to have an actual, like, bedroom space?
Yeah, actually the-
You're calling it an ADU, which is fine, you can have it just as a room with the kitchen and a bath, but I'm just trying to think, like, was that contemplated to make it sort of a one-bedroom ADU or?
Not really. The new addition, which is, I believe, eighteen by fifteen, that will be the open area, so it can accommodate a bedroom, a bath, or it can be like a playroom. He doesn't really want to have anyone living in the house, he just wants to kind of manage it, be able to-
So it's not-
Keep it for a guest coming or family coming from out of town.
So-
It's not gonna be planned for rented for a tenant.
But even for a guest or a family coming from out of town?
Yeah, that area, the new area is gonna be like open concept.
There'd just be a bed in the open area.
A bed, you know, maybe, yeah. Sofa with table.
It's novel.
Yeah, that one, you can see that. Like a bachelor concept.
I have a question.
Sure.
On the bedroom addition, you have the gable going out. It seems more consistent with the rear elevation if you hip the roof instead of bringing that big gable out, and that would also pull the roof back from the tree canopy. So is that, you know, that seems like something that would help reduce the bulk of the building and relieve stress on the tree and?
That probably would be an option, but I know the owner, because we have conversations, and what he'd like to do is keep cathedral ceiling inside of the big massive bedroom, so that way he can just have a vaulted ceiling from inside.
But you can still do that.
Yeah, you can still do that.
You can still vault it.
Especially if you don't have windows out there, you know, a hip vault would be very attractive.
Yeah. The owner is meticulous, he has a PhD in philosophy, he's a very religious person, and his master bedroom, he wants to have like a church-looking feeling. And that's why he even has the three and three skylights, because there's a trinity on one side, trinity on the other side, so he's that kind of person, he's really meticulous in everything he does. He's a professor in the seminar in Pasadena.
Any other questions of the designer?
I looked at the drawings quite thoroughly and I noticed quite a few mistakes, which makes me worry that the drawings weren't completely thought through and checked back against one another. Like, I could go through one by one if you want, I don't know if you care. Drip line that show correctly on the site plan. On the gable end of the garage on the east side, the plan view isn't shown correctly. It's not shown correctly on the south elevation at the gable end of the garage. It does appear to be shown correctly on the existing, but not the proposed. On the proposed west elevation, the face of the garage roof is out too far. You can check it against the existing, since that roof isn't changing. And so if all the roofs are eight-twelve, the little covered porch roof isn't. I'm just- a whole series of these things, you know, one I could go, okay, but when there's a whole series, I get the feeling that the project isn't really thoroughly thought out yet.
Yeah, of course, we can correct the mistakes that we have, but the main house obviously is gonna be the integrity of the main house is gonna change.
And the canopy of the tree on the elevations is not shown correctly. It should be like that.
We can make those modifications as you would.
Any other questions? Will we refer back to?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak at this time? All right, we refer back to commission for discussion. Somebody wanna start?
Yeah, I'd like to. In addition to the inconsistencies that you were pointing out, I think the biggest one that we have to deal with here is that elevation issue. You'll note on the floor plan of the proposed project that there are no steps up, so I assume that what they're talking about is the addition being at the same floor level as the existing. And that would mean that actually this addition is going to be plowing two feet into the- two feet deep into the-
At least.
The yard, okay? That has a big effect on roots. It also means that the elevations are all incorrectly drawn because they do not reflect as the addition actually come up two more feet, or do we see the earth come up two feet around?
There was.
The outside, the patio doors wouldn't even work if-
That's why those elevations are important.
They're very important and actually how high, how low that is. I don't even know that the arborist, if the arborist was going by these drawings, the arborist probably wouldn't have a correct visualization of what's actually gonna happen to the roots on the tree to begin with.
My assumption was that when I was standing behind that garage, that that was gonna be the plane of the floor in the addition. And I was aware that to get to that oak tree, you had it uphill.
Excuse me. Yeah, well, throws everything off.
Meaning the elevation at the oak tree was higher by two feet?
The oak tree, my perception was that the oak tree was two feet higher than the-
Finished floor of the house.
Than the floor level, whatever level that floor was gonna be. Because I figured they were gonna pour a slab based on the garage level, because it's basically addition off the back of the garage. And so if it's going flat, the topography goes uphill.
So you know that they're going to be cutting in probably three feet in total to get back to-
Well, that chimney thing is way above the level of the backyard.
I am- could you put up the drawing that has the proposed north elevation? Do you have that available? It shows the little dotted lines are the floor's level, and they're higher on the west side than in the center.
Is there a step, though?
And then, for some reason, the dotted line at the addition is just a tad above the existing house in the center.
There's no two feet.
But I have no idea what a tad is or what's really happening anywhere specifically. And, yeah, just the grades, just the heights, since so many things in this project are height-sensitive, whether it's the tree roots or the ridge line, it just seems we need the exact grades and-
Yeah, the color elevation, that's the proposed east elevation.
The rendering?
The ren- yeah. It seems to indicate some of those challenges that you're referring to. That shows that the grade is getting higher and higher against that house. But that seems to be the only place that really speaks to it at all.
Well, and you know that's only five feet away from the property line on the east, so is that indicating that they're gonna alter grade right at the property line? That raises other questions.
It also shows it dimension, the finished floor is below the height measurement, so that would indicate that the finished floor is below the grade-
Yeah.
By, well, on this drawing, it looks like this much, but something's wacky there, too. That's not right.
And also, I mean, look at the drawing of the oak tree there is totally misleading. It's like, it's pulled back, so it isn't leaning over the house at all, and it's obvious they show this as being much higher up in the air than the photographs would indicate, too. So I think personally that this has to be sent back for redrawing before we can even work with it any further.
I was waiting for you to comment on the roof.
On the roof?
Material.
Oh, I didn't get to that. I would like to ask the designer one more question then, and that is, is the entire building going to be re-roofed or is this just roofing material for the addition?
Well, actually, the existing, it's pretty much close what we have, but they're trying to do the same color and the entire house, which is charcoal gray.
It's black.
It's, yeah, it's black, pretty much. It's not really black, but it's-
That's what's on it right now.
That's what's on it now, black?
Yeah. Well, it's a different, slightly lighter of the system.
Oh, that's not-
You mean it's faded?
It looks gray in the pictures.
Yeah, it's like light gray.
Yeah, the existing is slightly lighter and it turns more like a brownish color, so the new roofing entire house is gonna be darker gray.
Sure, it's asking us to, among the findings, to, you know, consider the sustainable aspects of the design and black roofing that soaks up heat like crazy is not particularly sustainable. That's why I was asking if you were going to re-roof the entire house in the process, then I think-
Yeah, it would be a-
It should be a lighter, there are lighter colors out there, some of which are, I believe, would be fine with the blue.
Yeah, of course, like I said, the owner choose the color, but if you propose something lighter, I think he's willing to consider.
Okay.
I think-
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I was in discussion with the applicant. They chose, they spoke with the client who chose a dark roof because they would like to have solar in the future, and they believe that the solar panels would be camouflaged by the black roof.
So you can get cool roof designations on a charcoal-colored roof. There's some sort of charcoal colors that have the cool roof designation. It's not black, though.
Well, then, if they're going to do that-
They're gonna be lighter gray.
Sustainability is part of what we're looking at here, then they should provide the specification-
For a cool roof?
For that material specifically, and it should be part of what goes forward with the building department then.
They wanna put in solar on the addition, which has a north-south access. It's underneath an oak tree on the north side, and on the east side, the property owner has some rather large trees on that property line. I mean, if you go back to the overhead Google map shot, there's not a lot of open area for that, because the-
It'd have to go on the main house.
The one thing that is saving this project is the property on the east, the house is located to the east side of their property, so there's not a lot of conflict on that line, but there is a lot of trees that are substantial, because I looked at that. So you would, they would be out in here, so I'm not sure that they get a whole lot of sunlight.
It would have to go on the south face of the main house.
Yeah, normally they're on the south side.
Yeah, like that, the light part, that's the existing house? It'd have to go there.
I've got similar tree coverage on my roof and I've been turned down by solar companies three times already.
Yeah, so-
But it's better to have the trees than to have the solar panels to run your AC anyway.
My understanding from discussions with the applicant is that the whole roof will be re-roofed in this new charcoal black. They haven't said where they're proposing for solar panels, but I would think that if they re-roofed the whole thing, that it would be eligible on that south elevation.
Yeah, but for something that's few- Yeah, but for, for something that's future, that's not on, on the plans now, it may or may not happen. Like, but we're designing the roof to be a heat sink now for something that will be camouflaged down the road. Like, it doesn't make sense, like.
No, it can't, it really can't enter into the deliberation here at all.
It's odd.
Odd is right. Okay.
But anyway.
I have one more concern to raise. Along with the grading, I think drainage might be an issue at the back of the house.
Cause it drains into the house.
Yeah, because, yeah, it's, it's got to get, I think the general drainage is from west-east on Mariposa there. Am I right or wrong?
I don't know, we'd have to see a survey with elevation.
It looks like on the existing site plan, it's going that way.
It's west-east, yeah.
So it would have to get out around not only the addition, but the oak tree drip line. So the drainage is, should certainly be addressed in the next presentation, I think.
I wondered about that.
Some retaining rules.
Well, the other thing that was shock, striking about this property is that the back, the back of the property is a twelve-foot block wall from the, from the apartment house to the north.
You hardly see it, I think.
You can hardly see it, but it's, I mean, it's on the property line.
Yeah.
So.
So you think it affects the drainage?
Well.
Cause the drainage is going south, east.
It, it's higher than, but there's nothing behind it. So I don't know how the water is getting off the property on the north.
No, it's coming down from the north to the south.
Yeah.
So I think Bob's concern is from here to here.
That's a covering block wall right across there.
Yeah.
At the fence line.
I think we need to create a, create a motion with some marching orders here, don't we?
Well, we need to.
Let's continue to see if there's other comments from other commissioners and try to get everything out there so that the next presentation that we get back has all of our feedback to it.
Well, I don't have, you have more critical consider, concerns than I do. I, the, the house covers the whole front of the property. The addition, I didn't see problematic cause it's hiding in the back as far as the design is concerned. So I think the drainage issues and, you know, maybe be the most important thing to readdress, but I don't have anything else.
You know, at first glance, I didn't, I didn't have a lot of concern with the design mainly because it's at the rear side of the property of the house. But the more I stared at it, the drawings and, and as Commissioner Dallas pointed out, just the sheer amount of inconsistencies of the information. Not having the survey with that information is critical. It's hard to know what, where the finished floor is at relative to the natural grade and what's happening there. You know, I have silly concerns, like you do a slab on grade near an oak tree. And sure, you sever the roots or whatever you need to do, but roots do grow back. Like, it's kind of an funny thing, like nature grows back. And so like, come back in a year or two and that slab potentially could be all cracked up. You know, I mean, it, it doesn't take a lot from roots to, to start cracks in a slab on grade. You know, especially if you're pouring the minimum, which is like a four-inch slab. Good luck. So I have concerns about that whole interface with, with the oak tree and, and the finished floor. Where that is relative to the existing house, the sheer amount of inconsistencies in the drawings and the information, the lack of the survey. And as far as, you know, the design goes, I mean, I don't really have issues with it. There's some quirky things. I think that suggestion for the hip on the addition is, is great. I mean, I think that does a lot to mitigate the canopy of the tree and, and the issues there. But, you know, it seems like there's an, a, a potential unwillingness to change that. So that, that, that would be something I would wanna see is, is addressing the roof profile there to play nice with the tree. I find it odd, you know, going through the energy and effort and the dollars to, to upgrade this ADU. And I guess you can have what you want. I mean, it doesn't bother, I don't have any issues with the design, but it seems odd like that there's no bedroom portion, like the lot's huge. Like another hundred square feet on that thing wouldn't bother anyone. And you would have like a separate space, you know, whether you rent it or not. Like, it just seems like a better design to have that built in, you know, for that possibility. I mean, you just, you don't know, but.
But that is the applicant's prerogative.
That's fine, yeah, I know.
It's not part of our findings.
I just wanted to say it. But, but I find that odd. And, and, and this kinda whole thing, like this goes to your, your constant comment, which, which I appreciate is you can tell this was designed and figured out not by an architect. And, and I don't have any, I'm not saying anything against the designer, but like there's, it just hasn't been fully thought out and vetted. And so, you know, I always say there, there are bad architects too out there. So it's not like, you know, you, it's a mixed bag. But point being like just the thoughtfulness and the design, attention to detail and the issues, like that kinda bothers me, like it's inconsistent, like I don't really know what we're looking at. And, and, you know, it could have been so much better as far as how it was planned out. So I have concerns on that. So I definitely wanna see it again, cause I, I just think there's information missing, you know, at a high level that. I don't have any issues with the design, but I do have issues with the technical aspects of, of the design, so.
Which are deep enough that they are going to, they are going to affect the design in the end.
Yeah. So, there you go.
So from the twenty-five thousand foot level is, is the concept of putting the addition where it is and expanding the ADU, I'm, I'm comfortable with, I think it can be executed. I agree that, that it's the details that are, that are missing that, that makes me wonder if something is being masked and if not all the, all the issues are being addressed. You know, we start with the oak tree. I mean, the picture of the oak tree shows the branch coming out and, and it, and it being at a higher level than the presentation. And it makes you kinda wonder what else is being masked in this, in, in what we're seeing. So it's, it's a, I, I, this, this is a project that needs complete drawings because there are some, there's some stumbling blocks. Now, I, I want to commend staff for their PowerPoint with the juxtaposition of the existing and proposed. That was very helpful, putting the two together. I think staff was not served well by the client's material, but the format of doing that, I, I commend you for. And, and I'd like to see in all further, because it makes it really easy to have this discussion. The, I, I do believe that the, one of the solutions for the, for, for the applicant is that hip at the back. If they're that obsessed with the cathedral roof, they could put one window at the end with, you know, I don't know, stained glass in it or something, you know. But, but you could, you could drop that roof line from the ridge earlier and allow the oak tree to have a limb and still have light in there and have it be a vaulted space. I, I, I'm sure what they wanna do is they wanna ma, add to that, I guess it's the dining room or the kitchen or wherever, that also has a vaulted ceiling in it. But the, the design of that addition is, eh, I mean, you know, when you, when you look at some of the findings we're supposed to make, it, I mean, it fit, it matches the rest of the house. And the rest of the house is of, is of a rather fascinating architectural style that, you know, I, I'm not sure I quite follow. I believe that the, the modifications they're gonna make improve the, that, the house in terms. It almost looked, the house almost presents as if it'd been added to more than once in the past. So it's hard to figure, like where's the front door, you know, problem. So I think that's gonna clean up some of that, which will be, which will make the hu, the house present a, a little better. But there's, I, 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 I just think that, going back, that there are, there are, there's openings here for better work. And there's openings here for more enhanced design. And, you know, we, you know, we have some findings that we, we would like to, that we, in which we try to encourage the applicant to make improvements at a certain standard. And, I mean, this is pretty, this is a, a little below. So I would like to, you know, I'd like to see the, the applicant come back with much more complete drawings and detailed drawings. I'd like to see the applicant address that concept about the roots for the oak tree and how it's gonna, what, what are they gonna do about that slab and the, and the, and the roots? And I, and I wanna know that there is, that the, the arborist has also seen the same drawings. Cause I think part of what we're up against here is that we have incomplete drawings from the applicant and the arborist is making judgments based on those incomplete drawings. So I think that there's opportunity here for the arborist to be more specific in terms of their recommendation based on better information.
I agree with many of the items that have been said here. I think that the project size and scope is fine. I think that the, the overhead map that you look at just shows how big everything is around that house. So I don't, I don't have any heartache about the square footage here. I think that it's hard to make some of the judgments that we're being asked to make here without a complete package of information. I don't know if the, the roof should continue on the angle as it's drawn or it should be changed on the end, because I can't tell where the tree is in relation to it. I think that, that tree is kind of the, the crux of the discussion that we're having here. It's come up in everybody's comments. And so I think that getting very clear and accurate dimensional drawings of the tree in relation to the proposed building that are based off of the, based off of the, the, not the drawing.
Well, I think would.
No, well, yes, great, but what, what's the report called?
The arborist report?
The arborist report has the tree.
The survey, so that we're actually using definitive points and heights, so that we can see it in regards to that.
But I would, not to interrupt, but I would also say that the eight-point canopy that's shown on the arborist for that oak tree should be on that cer, on that site plan, not just the circle of the oak tree. Cause this is more accurate as to where the canopy is.
That's absolutely necessary.
So that should be superimposed on that survey in the site plan, anyway, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, not at all. Additive, thank you. So I, I think that we have ideas in, in our minds. We all have our own ideas as to where the tree does fall or doesn't fall, and so we need to see. I think that that would help us come to better decisions of saying, hey, you know what? The way it's drawn, have at it. You're not anywhere close to that arm. Or you know what? That's not where it needs to be. So I, I really think that having some definitive dimensional drawings based off of the survey would be extremely helpful here. Certainly the, the drainage is of concern. On one side, we wanna make sure that we don't chop too many of the roots. And on the other side, we're worried that they're gonna grow back. I don't know where to draw those lines. So I think that, again, we need some, some better dimension drawings to, to get a better feel from that.
It's called don't interfere with the tree as much as.
Well, but the other thing is.
They're proposing here.
Is that a contractor will say, well, unless I do some extra work here, your, the floor is gonna crack. And so they're likely to put in, go deeper, do whatever. And that discussion needs to be had before ground is broken.
Absolutely. So I think that's the other part that we may not have explicitly asked for, but should be is something to address the concerns about the roots affecting the foundation and what needs to happen to the foundation in order to avoid that and what the effects are of that from the arborist.
The solution might be that the, that addition is not, is five feet shorter.
Or it's two couple steps like up, you know, so it raises.
Or whatever, I mean, there's, there's more than one elegant solution to this.
This goes back to the idea that all those things need to be vetted and investigated by the designer or architect. And so, you know, you, you gotta have a situation where they're looking at all the options versus giving you kind of the bare minimum.
Let, let me add a couple of things to what we're talking about here. You know, you said you, you're gonna be going down more than, more than just the two feet to, to provide for a more substantial slab. Well, how about the footings?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
No, no.
Your perimeter, your perimeter footings are, are going to be, are going to be.
Eighteen inches?
No.
They're gonna be three, they're gonna be, you're gonna be going down four feet from existing grade around the, around the perimeter of this thing. You know, and, and look, you're, you're going to be right, right in here. You're, you're going to be cutting in four feet from existing grade. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a disaster for this tree. All right, it's, it's not just a matter of the two, two feet is, is what we're talking about for finish, finish elevation. But, you know, by the time you get a, you get a stem wall in there, you work it, you work it all out. You may be going down, you know, and, and they don't cut, they don't cut for the, for the, the, this is exactly where the bottom of the footing is supposed to be, kind of, kind of thing. They, and then, and then pack, all right? And they.
Okay, yeah.
They compress, okay, it's, it's, it's very, very, now, the, so, so we're really looking at something that's much more drastic than just the two feet. Especially the way, the way the, the north foundation here is, is, is going to be going crosswise of, of many, many major routes. And I, I generally, generally feel as though people should be able to design the way they want to. However, in this case, if, if you look at the dimensions of that master bedroom, twenty-six and a half feet by thirty-two feet, come on, okay? Come on, there, you could back off in the interest of saving the tree, really. That's, that's a huge, that's a huge room. And I don't like to deny people what they would like to have in terms of design. But, but, but the, the massive size of that room is really like impinging on the tree drastically. You, you may have to back off on the size of that room in order to make this work.
So are there any other items we should ask for?
What about a story pole for the addition, the, the bedroom addition? So we see exactly how the envelope is gonna interact with the tree.
And that might help the applicant as well.
Yes.
After they get the real grades established.
Normally we don't ask for that on additions, but yeah.
Given the lack of.
Specificity.
Specificity, thank you. It, it might help everybody involved.
I agree.
Cause it makes me kinda sad to see somebody, you know, build their hopes and dreams up and get this far and then, and encounter such basic issues. And so it's, it's, let's, let's make this really clear before we see it again.
Great. So I guess I will entertain a motion to. To continue to a date certain. And right now, we're probably looking at December nineteenth. Or January sixteenth. So what is the applicant's availability on those days? And the time to address all the issues that were. So either December nineteenth or January sixteenth.
Yeah, we'd like to shoot for the next one on December nineteen.
Yeah, we'd like to shoot for the next one on December nineteenth.
And Commissioner Dallas, if you had, you said you had additional edits or additional mistakes that you'd found? If you'd like to share those with staff, maybe in an email, staff can pass those on to the applicant.
I, I, I can give the markup drawings where I saw the, yeah, do that.
Can I have a question? Uh, cause the applicant is not here, and the owner also, I don't know if he was planning to, to be here. But anyways, the, um, any other suggestions to, uh, to the owner to keep the project as close as possible to this one? Cause, um, I, in all, for fight, because I was present, when they make a decision where to have that, they call the arborist to asking about the distance, the depth, all those issues, like the gentleman say, two feet, which is correct, plus another two feet deep into the ground, it was gonna be affected to the, to the tree. All the technicalities and the mistakes or lack of, uh, information, we can address that. But the owner, he moved from Pasadena to Sierra Madre buying this, uh, big lot because he really want to have a huge master bedroom. The master bedroom is also his study, and he said that he has thousands of books. So he wants, he just want to imitate what, what he has. He really want to have twelve hundred square foot, a massive bedroom, really specific in the location, cause he has all bookshelves all around. He doesn't want to have walls on one side. Even the, the applicant, the contractor, who has a lot of experience in doing, uh, construction in, in Pasadena, she was trying to suggest to have a different way to, uh, to propose this addition. Our job was also to have the addition to match the existing house, which it has so many also discrepancies and design issues, but just to match as a, the addition as much as we can. But as far as the design, he was really, like I told you before, I want this window, I don't want to have grids. With the help of Joshua, he was so kind and invest a lot of time with us coming back and forth. We're trying to please all client as much as we can, but sometimes he don't understand this kinda issues that you guys are talking. So we'd like to go back to them to give a better report and also alternatives. So next time, uh, we can have an agreement, you know, with the design, because also he has, you know, some kinda health issues that he would like to move to the house as soon as possible. So that's why I'd like to-
This, this meeting is recorded, and you can play the recording for the applicant.
Yeah, that, that's fine.
And the applicant is still welcome to have a very large bedroom with books around, but it may not go that long, maybe it'll be wider rather than longer, because if it's wider, then it won't go impinging upon the oak tree.
Yeah.
But that's why the applicant should probably hire a good architect that will be able to help them master that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but, yeah, but basically the design of the master bedroom, it just, like you said, a box, the, the roof and the windows. Besides the windows that we're proposing and the French door that we have, nothing else is needed besides matching the existing house.
But that, but see, this is where there's a disconnect. You see that as, as what you're providing for this project, but there are a lot of issues related to that oak tree and the, the structural feasibility of this addition, you know? And you're saying, well, just take the word of the, the arborist here, but we have issues with what the arbori- arborist was actually looking at in terms of the drawings when they made their recommendations. And we don't necessarily have confidence that what they're saying is true, because the drawings have a lot of discrepancy in them, and there's a lack of information. So if you wanna get this approved and move forward, I suggest you go prepare detailed drawings, giving us elevations of, of where the finished floor of that addition is, the bedroom, relative to the natural grade surrounding it. Have this tree, that the, the eight-point canopy on the survey with the points, all right? And then beyond that, I will, I would like to see if, if it really is two feet down, that close to the tree, and then your, your, your footing is probably another two feet. That's four feet, right? So, and you're telling me we can cut all those roots and, and the tree will be perfectly fine?
Yeah, show it to us in section.
At that point, you basically have a four, a, at least a two-foot retaining wall, right? On the back of the addition, if it's down, right? Or is it raised up? Are you gonna bring, are you bringing that thing up? What's the elevation? There's a lot of technical stuff, so the architecture isn't just like the windows and the roof and the walls, right? It's much more than that.
Yeah, but my, yeah, my point is, we can take care of those technical issues, which are very important to comply, you know, at this point or, and also during construction. Besides the solution with the oak tree, uh, it's anything else I can do, because one of the things I was proposing is to raise the, the finished floor, you know, you raise the floor from the existing house to the addition, at least sixteen to eighteen inches will have a, a less impact to the tree.
Okay.
And either owner wish to have no steps, or maybe just a couple steps, because he was trying to avoid the steps. Maybe can do a ramp next to it or, or something, you know, to please it. If there's something that we can comply with your, um, concerns, which are very, very, uh, well taken, the, the concept, it can be something I can keep. Otherwise, I have to talk, to tell my client, we may have to do another considerations about not just the roof color, but also just the window design, or maybe like the, it's a big, I understand it's a huge room, and it's, for me, it's like a doggy house, just being a big gable. We're trying to, even in match existing, trying to make it nicer, with any other consideration that we had to, to share with my clients in order to have a better project next time.
Along those lines, if he really wants the gable to go all the way out, and since it's in the back and it is a ranch style, you can lower the pitch of the roof considerably. And that still will be within the ranch style and you keep the, the gable, but maybe stay down from the branches.
I guess my issue, I, I see what you're asking, but at the same time, like, we can't design it for you, and we can't tell you, do one, two, three, four, five, and you have an approvable project. It just doesn't work that way, like-
No, no, I understand.
But, but I think-
That's what exactly we're trying to say, what the option that has-
The feedback you've gotten, um, I think if you focus on getting us better information on, on the grades and all that. I think design-wise, like, I think you can have that addition, it's just, it, it might be a little bit smaller, it might be a little bit slightly different shaped, relative, you know, diff- or raised up, but I, I don't think we're saying- Yeah, I don't think we're saying, um, you can't have it there. Like, I think you can, it's just a matter of citing it better relative to the oak tree. Like, that's a huge issue, so if, whatever you do to resolve that, like, you were just suggesting, I might raise it up eighteen inches, cause then it gives, you know, potential, those are all good things. So like-
Okay.
The more of that you do, the better it will be received.
But, but we also wanna know that the arborist then has seen your new proposal and is comfortable with it. Because we don't see in here, if it goes, if it were, if, if it were to be built the way you've designed it, we believe that there's going to be a retaining wall and a four-foot trench for, for the, for the foundation. Well, we see nothing in here that says it's okay to dig a four-foot trench around that tree.
Right.
So.
I think the arborist should appear next time.
Fine, bring the arborist. Yeah, if the arborist comes and says, yeah, no problem, then we're much more comfortable. Well, we're gonna ask him some questions, though, I mean.
However, I, I think that that's gonna structurally undermine the, the, the tree. Just wait for the next hundred mile an hour wind.
Whatever, yeah.
But I mean, that's, yeah, that's not a bad idea, you know? Because that's, what you're hearing is concerns around the relationship of that tree to the addition.
But I think we need to be very clear here. I know you were talking about what the, what, what the owner wants, what they want. They want it the size, they want this, they want that, okay? You still must, as a designer, rectify that stuff with what we're talking about here tonight, okay? If you come back without those things solved and, and, and say, well, uh, yeah, except that's not what the owner wanted, then, um, we're not going to be able to approve it next time, because these are all very, very serious and quantifiable issues. These are, these are not just a bunch of people sitting here talking design opinions to you, okay? These are very serious planning issues, and they absolutely need to be resolved. And you need to reconcile that with what the owner's gonna be happy with.
That's correct. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being attentive to us, thanks.
So I will entertain a motion to, uh, move this to, postpone to a date certain of December nineteenth?
Also move second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Do we have a complete list of what's going to be required for staff?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Vincent's pen's running out already.
All right. Next on the agenda is a discussion of design review thresholds and design review findings for residential projects. Appropriate. And staff does have a presentation for you this evening, PowerPoint presentation. It's not too long, and it's a kind of an introductory discussion and to identify some of the issues that we think need to be addressed. So as a way of background, the city council adopted ordinance thirteen eighty-nine, which established new design review thresholds and findings, and that has been incorporated into, and codified into the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. And also more recently, in twenty nineteen, staff did receive direction from the city council to amend the design review findings to ensure that they are objective and code-based. So the objective that we are going to be looking at this evening in terms of our review is to review and amend design review thresholds, or consider what would be appropriate, and the same thing would be to revisit some of our design review findings. So, the design review process, we have two different evaluations. One, it could be handled at a staff level, which is generally for smaller projects, administrative design review. And also, uh, design review permits that fall under the planning commission purview, which are generally larger projects, new projects and additions that exceed certain thresholds. The design review thresholds are applicable in the following zones, the single-family residential zone, residential canyon zone, and medium-high-density residential zone. Attachment A also shows the thresholds that require various design review applications. The R-two family residential zone currently has no administrative or design review permit regulations in place. The commission has, uh, discussed that we will also have to be reviewing or revising the R-two ordinance in the near future, and we could, uh, address this then, or we can possibly consider incorporating some changes to the R-two zone, um, during our discussion. We also have a hillside management zone that is not, uh, a part of the design review permit process. It has its own development standards that are very specific, and the commission is also, uh, reviewing and making changes to that hillside management zone as well. So currently, the existing code in the single-family residential zone does not provide for any review, whether staff or commission review, if the project is less than twenty-five hundred square feet. So project, even a brand-new house, would go straight to plan check without any administrative review. If it's new construction or an addition that exceeds twenty-five hundred square feet, then it requires a design review permit by the planning commission. And also any second-story additions or new two-story construction requires design review by the planning commission. Also, building encroachments into the side yards or angle planes requires, depending on the size and the encroachment, either staff level or planning commission review. And the same would be, uh, also true for reduced side yard setbacks. And any additional height to accommodate architectural features, such as a roof structure, would require a planning commission level review. So these are the existing standards in the single-family residential zone. The existing code requirements in the residential canyon zone also does not require any review for structures less than twenty-five hundred square feet. And actually, the trigger for review by the commission, it would have to be above three thousand square feet. Building encroachments would also go to the planning commission into side yards or angle plane. The residential canyon zone does allow for modifications, to allow for reduced front, rear, and side yard setbacks with a design review permit. And the same thing would also be true of encroaching into second-story additions into a sing- single-family house that does not meet, uh, setback requirements. So one of the proposed modifications to the residential canyon zone would be to provide new or cumul- cumulative construction that exceeds, instead of three thousand square feet, bring that back down to twenty-five hundred square feet, more in line, in alignment with, uh, the review thresholds for a single-family residential in the R-one zone. And also to include, which it does not now, additions or new construction which include a second story. So they'll have a second story trigger, uh, design review by the planning commission as well. As I alluded to earlier, the R-two-
Sorry, Vince, who are these, uh, suggestions from?
They're coming from staff.
Okay.
As a discussion, jumping off point. Uh, proposed amendments for the R-two zone. I know we had discussed when the planning commission was modifying the R-three multifamily zone, was to use some of the same thresholds and apply those to the R-two family residential zone. And again, starting from a, a baseline of twenty-five hundred square feet, so everything is a little bit more consistent, whether it be R-one, R-two, or RC, establishing new construction of new units, less than twenty-five hundred square feet as an administrative design review permit. So what that is meaning is, if you already have an existing unit in an R-two zone, and you're adding a new construction of a new unit, that would require, that's twenty-five hundred square feet or less, it would trigger an administrative design review permit. The same would be true if the new construction and there's existing units on that parcel, if it's larger than twenty-five hundred square feet, it would also require administrative design review. But new constructions or additions exceeding twenty-five hundred square feet, actually, I was supposed to take that second line out, would trigger design review by the planning commission. And any second-story additions or new construction automatically triggers design review by the planning commission. And new construction of structures of small businesses in the residential professional overlay zone would also go to the commission.
On that fourth bullet point, any second-story additions or new construction?
Of a second story.
Of a second story, okay? It's not new construction in general.
Of a second story.
Okay.
Would require design review permit. The R-three was recently modified, no proposed amendments are being made at this time. So if we would like to go back and discuss, uh, some of the issues or concerns that we have here, including, uh, no review in place for new construction less than twenty-five hundred square feet, we can take each of one independently.
Can, Vincent, can you explain, like, from a thirty-thousand-foot view of what's precipitating, looking at, like, in other words, are we not catching projects that are being constructed at the twenty-five hundred square foot threshold? Or, or, or do we have too much of a bottleneck because we're over-reviewing? Like, what's, what's precipitating this, this whole thing?
It's not even just the twenty-five hundred square foot threshold. That is based on the lowest lot size, the smallest lot size. So if we have a lot that is, you know, larger than seventy-five hundred, or we'll take the example, eleven thousand square feet, they would be allowed, uh, the trigger for design review is a thirty-five hundred square foot house, just like what we saw this evening. So if they come in below that- So if they come in below that and they comply with all other requirements, they would be able to move forward straight to plan check without any design review. We've had some concerns that have been addressed by, in front of this commission, by people in the community about some architectural designs that have had and have been built, actually, without any level of review other than plan check. And that's where this is coming from.
So.
The question is whether or not we, we've had these discussions in the past. People should be allowed to build if they're under a certain threshold. Certainly, what this is showing is not saying that additions, not capturing additions that are less than 2,500 square feet. But it's really talking about a project that is being, an existing property that is being demolished and replaced with new construction without any review.
Under the 3,500 square, well, it depends on the lot size.
On the lot size, yes.
So, but you have some concern in this 2,500, there's nothing in review right now. Like, you could build it by right.
Right.
And there's been some concern with houses that are built in that size.
How that presents. Because people have built some smaller houses, but the community is erped when they saw the results.
Apparently, there was, apparently, there's some kind of a threshold determined here. I don't know who did it or when, that the impacts, the planning impacts under 2,500 square feet were, you know, if we're really, like, looking at, looking at the basic cooking, we're not talking about aesthetic design here, but we're talking about the basic, the basic configuration of a house. Somebody decided that, that the impacts really kick in over 2,500 square feet. On the other hand, the project that we looked at this evening, if it had come in just under 2,500 square feet, we could still have had all the same problems. So that's what I don't understand about this threshold business.
Well, is, is.
Staff didn't pick up on everything we talked about tonight.
It's on lot size.
It's on the size, okay.
Yeah.
So 11,000 and.
So the thresholds for design review, and some of that is in attachment A, but it's probably easier to see it here. So lot areas up to 7,500 square feet. The threshold is, if you exceed 2,500 square feet of floor area, then it triggers design review.
Right, 7,500 and below.
Does not.
Yeah, for lot sizes.
Right. If you are, a lot areas from 7,500 to 11,000 square feet.
3,000.
3,000 square feet is the trigger. If you go above that, it requires design review. And then lot areas that are above 11,000 square feet, the trigger is 3,500 square feet.
What are we trying to get at here? I feel like you didn't really respond to my question a minute ago about, about why do you have triggers when there's, when there's so much potential for, for, like, really bad, bad work that could have big problems in it, even if it's under 2,500 square feet? Why do we have the triggers?
I think the initial conversation probably through the planning commission, even before my time in city council, is that people should be able to build to a certain threshold without having an undue burden of review by staff or planning commission.
Well, I get, I get that part of it, but there's still a, there's still a functional problem with it. So I'm just trying to understand the whole, the whole picture here.
What's the maximum lot coverage percentage?
It's going to vary.
By zone.
Lot size and zone, yeah.
Okay, so.
For the instance, this, the lot coverage for the project that we saw this evening, larger lot, 40%.
Yeah. But the, the minimum?
30%.
30%.
On the smaller, on the smaller lots in town. So can I ask staff to opine on how much pent-up need there is for construction in this town? Because we have stopped a lot of construction due to our drought moratorium. Therefore, at some point in time, A, it's going to rain, or B, the state is going to tell us we can't do that anymore. So what, what, what kind of, what does our future look like in terms of projects in this town?
So in terms of hillside management zone, it's probably the more significant opportunity sites would be the Stonehouse site, which has been around for probably 10 years, proposing 12 houses. They're not significant in terms of new construction up in the hillside management zone.
But the thresholds for those are not being changed.
And they're not being changed.
Right.
There are some other sites in the hillside management zone. For instance, the monastery could develop with institutional uses, which are, they're currently zoned for. And that could yield a significant number of units if the water moratorium were lifted. In terms of some of the R3-zoned properties around Suffolk and some other contiguous properties, there are some opportunities only if properties were consolidated and they were purchased by a common property owner, developer, to be able to build either condominiums or apartments.
And that's the R3s?
And that's in some R3-zone locations.
And but the, and that, so, and there are still some lots in town that aren't developed that would be in R1, R2?
Right. I think we identified possibly maybe half a dozen of those. Unless properties are split, and some of the lots are fairly large, that could occur.
Okay, and the, the other question I have is that the state has just passed a law that talks about being permissive to, or, or not allowing municipalities to be overly restrictive on additional units on existing properties.
That's correct. It depends on if we're talking about inclusion of additional accessory dwelling units. Yes, the laws are going to be much more permissive and a lot of the local control will be eliminated. The same would be stated also for multifamily development, especially if it were for possibly encouraging affordable housing or workforce housing through density bonus. That would require additional height or densities. That would take away some of the control from cities, preventing that from occurring.
But using the 2,500-square-foot threshold, we are not likely to see those additional dwelling units being that large.
No, that would be, we're still playing with existing lots, existing housing stock that would be replaced with new construction. And that would predominantly depend on who's purchasing that property. Is it going to be for speculation? And the house is torn down, new construction goes in place, and then it's sold on current market value.
So for me, the, the issue here is, is, is control of our, development of our community. And I don't have a lot of problems with, with your proposal for thresholds. But mostly because it's based on our current staff is exceptional, and they do an excellent job of working with the applicant to get the best possible results. Unfortunately, I'm, I've been on this staff for, I've been on this committee for too long, and I've seen previous staff that I'm not sure had that same skill set or that same diligence or commitment to good product. So the other thing I'm, I'm kind of aware of is that the, the planning commission has, doesn't have the authority that we would like to think we do. We pretty much have the authority to annoy, and we can make, we can set bars and make people, you know, jump through a few flaming hoops. And I'm, I'm reluctant to be too permissive, even though I, I think that the city council would like, like us to, would like us to somehow be more streamlined in our approach. But, you know, it's, it's, it's the difference between the community objectives and property owner and development objectives. And for me, I, I have great faith that staff under administrative design review will do an excellent job with current staff. But I would like to see more pressure on the applicant to produce and to present projects that are, that will do our community better service. And, you know, tonight was an excellent example of where things cannot go well. And perhaps in all of this with findings, we should put in that there should be an architect involved.
And the commission has discussed that in the past as well.
And, and I'd be much more comfortable in giving administrative design review to staff if it was also, if the staff was also working with an architect, because quite honestly, I believe that would make staff's life easier.
Yes.
Because my sense is that currently, there's a lot of explaining being done. And as a taxpayer, I want your time spent well. And while the committee is happy to redesign someone's plan, I don't think that we should be paying for staff to do that. You know, I think it should come in, you know, fully formed. So in the first half of this discussion on thresholds, I'm fairly, I'm pretty comfortable with, with your recommendations, providing that we demand that it's, the, the product is done by an architect.
I'm, I'd like to make a few comments. I like where you're going with all this. The administrative design review for smaller projects is a good idea, and it's missing, actually. It's been added to the R2, but it's missing in R1 and RC. So that would be, you know, nice for the 2,500 and less to have an administrative design review. But also, if there was an archi, a review sort of architect that the staff could send the work to, that was, that worked really well up in Los Catos where I was from. There was an architectural standards committee for a while, and they finally got rid of us. And they hired a.
Why?
Because they, they didn't think it was effective enough, and they wanted to try consulting architect. And so I was working in an architect's office at the time on some projects, and that came back from this consulting architect. And it was like a breath of fresh air. It wasn't like, you know, planning commissioners' ideas of what design should be, because they didn't have architects on the planning commission. Or, you know, vague, some vague recommendations. It was, the drawings were marked up, and it was like, yes, fix this, do that. And these are the things that might make it better. And I, I think that's something that's really worth considering. I don't know what it costs or what budgets are or.
Well, yeah, that's, listen, Bob and I are lifer to this. We were probably part of that discussion about what we should include on some of these, you know, thresholds for, I think John Hutt actually came up with the formula that modified our, you know, the formula for lot coverage and thresholds for coming to the planning commission for the total size of houses. It got reduced. But I, I have a concern. I mean, I like to make it easier for staff because, like you say, working with an architect works. But, I mean, it's helpful to you, makes things more streamlined and efficient. But, you know, costs can be, can be a real issue. I mean, one of the issues for the town is somebody comes with a simple project and they think they're going to be able to, you know, have a certain budget. And then it just blows out of proportion because everybody wants to chime in on it. And, you know, having design review, you know, just means more layers of, you know, people designing their project for them somewhat.
They should have had a competent architect to, to, to help work with the design and the budget at the outset.
Well, I, I.
That's a problem.
No, no. We shouldn't relegate people to construction of their house only if they can afford a full-blown licensed architect for that work and not be able to submit to that. I completely disagree with that premise entirely. I think that there, that, much to what Commissioner Pevner is saying, people should by right be able to build their house at, up to a certain threshold. I think that the idea of burdening people, because let's look at the other side of this, okay? Let's look at the other side. In 60 days, any house that was built before 1945 is 75 years old and has to come before us. This town is going to turn into a bunch of blighted houses that nobody wants to fix because they've got to go get a historical preservation report that costs $10,000. They're then going to have to go get a historic architect to come in and design, redesign their house that is a cookie cutter World War II bungalow.
They're really expensive.
And they are expensive, man. They will get you going and coming, right? So, so my fundamental challenge with what you're saying is that.
I'm going to disagree here.
No, but, but my fundamental challenge is that if we start putting dollar thresholds to people wanting to do construction and improvement to their house, we are inviting people to not do construction to their house, which is going to become a huge hurdle. We saw the PowerPoint presentation previously on the number of houses in town that are going to go on the historic preservation threshold in the next five to 10 years. It's alarming.
This is something, this is another, first of all, I've done a whole bunch of those in La Cañada, okay? And they're, they're all in the four to $5,000 range, not, not 10. But even, even with, with that, they're, they're tremendously overblown in terms of what's required. I think that, that it would be possible to greatly reduce the, the cost of most of those, probably at least by half, if we got more sane about exactly what should be included and not included in those historic structures reports. Most, most of them can just be disposed of very quickly.
And if you recall, we brought this discussion to city council. City council adopted revised ordinance. And we do sole-source all of our historic resource evaluations. And basically, they consist of a DPR form, and some of them are fairly, still fairly lengthy. And they're sole-sourced to one group, and the, the cost is $1,200. In the past, we were looking at his full historic resource evaluations ranging anywhere from 25 to 7,500 dollars, depending upon who the consultant was.
On this project, what was that, was that an example of that?
It's $1,200.
The one that was in here? Yeah, okay. Because that was truncated, the one that was.
So that $1,200 is another fee, even if we've reduced the price, right? When you are making the decision as somebody who has an older home that you want to update, and you have to layer on the $1,200 plus the permit fees, plus the architectural fees that would be.
To come here.
Plus, plus, some of these would automatically come here. I mean, we start really talking about layering on some hurdles from people who want to improve their homes and keep it looking good.
And not to mention, not just hiring an architect or a designer, it's also a structural engineer and a civil engineer for the project as well.
Yeah, so let me, let me rephrase something that I was saying before, and that, what I was really getting at with that comment a couple minutes ago, pardon me, is, is that people, people, whether, whether you're drawing it on your kitchen table or there's a registered architect doing it, no matter to this discussion. It has to do with, with whether, when you're designing the thing, before you come to the city with it, that it's designed competently from the standpoint of what you're going to get for the money, and, and you are competently within budget, right? Okay? Some of the things that we, we've seen, like tonight, yeah, we may be, we may be running a tab on them, but it wasn't competent to begin with. So it really is only a matter of, of not, not our running a tab on, on people unnecessarily. It, it has to do with whether the, in line with what you were saying, is, is whether the thing right out of the box was designed competently and there were real, realistic costs. That's, that's all I'm getting at with the thing, and we've seen instances where that just, just isn't the case.
And forgive me, I actually cut off Commissioner Pevner. I'm sorry.
We did, about 10 minutes ago.
That's okay. No, and, and I was, I was just sort of trying to speak from experience, because Bob's been here as long as I have, that, you know, I think we've tried to be reasonable about the cost we help make applicants incur. And over time, because of all these concerns, it's, there's been all this, there's, I would call fee creep. And I'd like it to make it easy for staff. In fact, to make it easier for what, just to speak what you're talking about, Joe, is if someone could come in that might have to come to the planning commission if it's going to trigger this. Or if it's not, they can stay, like, we've had many projects where they wanna stand, they used to wanna stand at four thousand square feet. We had one right on, on Orange Grove, remember? He came in, and his, his back patio was larger than his, like, like.
All of our houses.
Pool or something like that. So he went under the square footage and got what he wanted over the counter, and he worked with staff, who, you know, I'm sure competently got him to reduce the size of it. And, but my, my point is that it is, they need to be able to come in freely and say, with some threshold, knowing threshold, it's like, this is what I wanna do, and if I can stay under a certain threshold, a certain threshold, I can work with staff. And if I need to get an architect to, you know, to make it so you guys can, can work with them, so they can get their, their project approved, either over the counter, or it triggers to come to us that we know exactly. They have an idea what that costs before they even get to the design stage. Only because we've had some people who just, you know, wanna just do an expansion, and they come into a major problem, because the corner of their, of their, of their project goes into a hillside or something like that, and it starts triggering, triggering all kinds of things that then make it come to us, and it mounts to, you know, just, you know, fifty square feet of a garage or something encroaching into a hillside.
If you're that interested in saving the person money, then this is what, this is what we're doing tonight. Because the gentleman that was here is now gonna go back and spend extra money and come back again, because he didn't do it right the first time, because he didn't bring that skill set to the job. And we're going, my concern is all the citizens in Sierra Madre, because they're paying for the city services that are going to be taken up by incomplete work. And.
We're the only part of it that's free.
We're the free part, and we're doing a lot of work for them. But city staff is spending a whole lot of time at the counter saying, doing handholding. And as a taxpayer, I would rather have city staff, there's a lot of other things. I mean, the, there are hundreds of things that they could be doing in lieu of telling the guy, no, you have to do it this way. Things that are what we call common practice. Now, you can object to the fact that, well, I don't wanna have to hire an architect to, to put an addition on my house, but I would rec, I would suggest to you that the addition on your house will go faster and be more efficient, and you'll be able to get better construction done with the right drawings. And I think we saw tonight that, that the guy, the applicant is gonna struggle with this project, because it's incomplete from the get-go, and the city is wasting its valuable time and resources helping him try to get to a, a place that he could've walked in and been done. So he could've been in and out of here with no problem. Also, we're saving, we're saving people time and money, because we're pushing more over to the administrative review as opposed to coming to us. And I, I trust staff to make good decisions, especially this staff. But I want, I've been around long enough to know that staff changes. And the next staff, I want to be able to make good decisions, but if we ask them to bring in architectural grade drawings, then I believe that their decisions are more likely to be successful. So I get what you're saying, well, it's one more fee, one more fee, one more fee. But as taxpayers, we're gonna pay it, because we're, we're wasting staff's time. And as an applicant, you're gonna pay it, because you didn't get what you wanted the first time, so you're redoing, redoing, redoing. I mean, this poor guy tonight, he's, he's gonna pay for an extra, what, month's worth of work that he didn't get the first time, that someone could've said, hey, you know what, we need to do this. Or, I've been before, in front of this commission before, I know what questions they're going to ask, let's do this, this, and this. We've seen people come through here and grease lightning with a huge project, because why? They were prepared.
And we've seen architects come through here, and five times later, they're seeing us again.
Right, because they did a poor job.
Not.
No, not necessarily, because of.
Not because they did a poor job, because the planning commission didn't like the way it looked.
Look, I, I.
Well, that's, that's part of, I think, what the, what the.
That's the findings, that's the second part. We're just talking about thresholds.
That's, that's another part that the council's interested in, is, is how much, how much of what we do should be about our opinions as opposed to the, the, the design level of design work that has to do strictly with the findings and the technical issues like we dealt with tonight. But you didn't hear anything voiced about, well, I don't like this, or I don't like that. Okay, it was, it was all, it was all pretty quantitative tonight, wasn't it?
Well.
I mean, but, but the other part of it, the other part of it.
That's not the case most of the time, Joe. There's a lot of subjectivity in our code.
But if we have, if we have, I, I think part of what the council may be getting at here is that if we have somebody come back five times, just because commissioners are, are, this is their fifteen minutes in the, in the spotlight, and, and voicing their opinions about the aesthetics of the, the project, that's just wrong.
Look, you know, to bring this back to, I mean, I am completely sympathetic with your point, Commissioner Dennison, about, you know, like, I shouldn't have to pursue a certain avenue, you know, and be forced, you know, at gunpoint to hire a professional, you know, for my little bathroom addition, or, or whatever it is. But you also have to look at it like, at twenty-five hundred square feet, let's just take that as an example. Someone's building a brand-new house. So let's say it's even an addition for twenty-five hun, twenty-five hundred square feet on a big lot like the one we saw today. They're not throwing small change at that. Like, that is gonna be construction that's probably valued at at least half a million dollars, if not higher, you know, as far as what they're gonna spend. So in those instances, to say, well, you know, I, I can't, you know, we're just gonna draw it on our, draw it on our piece of paper and submit it, you know, hire a design build, like contractor, and just have them draw, like, you're gonna spend money to build that house, and it's not an insignificant chunk of change. And to entrust that to say, well, you know, the five thousand dollar permit fee, or this, that, like, that's part of doing business, you know, at, at that level. Like, to me, at the lower levels, like, where you're doing a five hundred, like, small projects, like, to me, I can see that being burdensome, like, I have to hire an, an architect for, to do my plans for my bathroom addition, or my little one-bedroom whatever, or kitchen, you know, remodel, or whatever it is, like, that's burdensome. But at these higher numbers, I don't think it's asking a whole lot to say, you should hire a competent professional to produce these plans, because, one, it will save you money, because you're not doing the work three times, potentially. And I am with you, like, there are bad architects out there, for sure, you know? But a lot of times, those who are just designers kind of putting the plans together for, for builders, or whatever the, the case may be.
An old-school way of doing things.
You do get what you pay for. And it sounds, you know, even in the architecture profession, like, you pay for a certain level of service, that's what you're gonna get. Like, it's not, you know, and to, to say, well, you shouldn't force me to hire, I think, it streamlines the process all the way around. And look, I know it sounds somewhat disingenuous, because it's like, well, I'm just trying to drum up more work, but that's not the case, like, I mean, we're busier than we can be, like, we're not asking for more work. But the point being is, I think it protects everyone in the process, when you're spending that much money on something, you know. At the lower levels, sure, I agree with you, I don't think, I don't think it warrants that. But, and I think at those levels, like, you know, I, I don't think it's necessary, you know, to have those. And, and I think we should make costs less at those lower levels, those smaller projects, because those are the ones that you're more unlikely gonna, are gonna go undone, you know? Like the little additions, or the remodels, or the things like that. Because, you know, at the larger level, like, those costs are baked in, they need to be baked in. Or you can't, you basically can't afford to, to do it. Like, you're spending half a million dollars, and you're gonna have somebody come in and do napkin sketches, and basically, you know, you're gonna do engineering, you're gonna do everything, you're gonna come before us? Like, there's, there are a lot of soft costs baked in. Like, you know, saving on your designer shouldn't be one of them.
I understand, but, so let me ask this then. Are you proposing, rather than it being at a certain level, that it's a certain size or percentage at which you have exceeded a threshold? Cause, I mean, if you have a twenty-four hundred square foot house, and you want to go put on a two-hundred-square-foot addition, you've now triggered. So are you, are you saying that?
No.
Cause that, that's the problem that I'm hearing, is that you're saying that everything, no matter what, needs an architect. I don't agree with that premise, but that's the way that the code is proposed. So are you saying that it's?
I think there's something wrong with, with this, like, the threshold thing, when we developed that, was our best approach at the time to, to start seeing some of these projects that got bigger, you know? And really, that threshold thing was focused at really large additions and new construction. Like, it, it, what, what inevitably, it's a big net that unfortunately is capturing also, like, your example right there, where they're at, you know, use a bigger example, they're at thirty-three hundred or something, you know, with all their, their house and accessory structures, and they go to do that ADU, you know, and add two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. Now, it's thirty-six hundred square feet or something. And now you're like in a full-blown review. I think there's some, something wrong with the mechanism on the threshold. And what we were trying to do was capture the bigger fish, you know, and make sure that we saw them, and that they met sort of our criteria, and were designed well and, and made sense, you know?
So then, it doesn't sound like the thresholds need to be based on total square footage, which is what they are now, but by the change of square footage.
Who do you think we're working for?
Who do I think we're working for?
Yeah, why are we here?
I think we're working for the citizens.
All of them?
All of them, including.
All of them that see all the houses in town. All the houses that you drive by, all the houses that are around you, all the houses that make your community. Right?
Sure.
Not the guy that's building the house, all the people that live around that house.
False premise, the person who is building that house is also a citizen.
That's the percentage of the town, that one out of twelve thousand? That percentage of the town. So, so if something is built here, everybody sees it, not just that one person. And that one person, they can build, let's say, whatever they want, because they're under a certain threshold. They build it, and they go, oh my god, this place is awful. They move, they go to Hambur or someplace. But the property stays here, and we all have to keep looking at it. That's kind of why we're here, and so.
My biggest regrets on this committee is that I didn't do, speak up more about some structures that I have to drive by every day. And we, I perceive, and I, I get that, hey, it's my property, I can do whatever the hell I want to, you know, argument. But your property is in our town, and we have some responsibility to keep our town the way the citizens want it. And if the citizens wanted huge mansions, we would hear from them.
People who live in cities.
But I don't, I don't hear people coming before us saying, hey, build bigger houses. I don't hear people coming before us, we want more cookie cutter, you know.
But that's a different argument.
Yeah, that's.
That's a completely different argument, because the code is set up for exactly what you just were worried about.
The bigger, the bigger.
Bigger house.
Yeah.
The people said, we don't want a bigger house.
You're talking about the smaller, like, little improvements that get taught.
These are small little improvements that, that, that you're now saying need to go in front of architects.
So what if, you know, you take the threshold of anything under twenty-five hundred square foot, or you, you take the percentage of the, the square footage to the house, the addition, whatever new construction or remodeling or addition you're doing, that amount of construction, square feet, dollars, however you figure it, as a percentage of the house is maybe a threshold? Or whether it's visible from the street is a threshold, you know?
Because that, that's a good point, that's another issue. Like, it's not just how much you're improving or building, right? It's also where it is, right? Like, I hate to kind of sound crass, but like, if you're gonna add twenty-five hundred square feet, and it's behind your house, going to your rear property line, like, I'm not really seeing it from the street. And if it's just a hot mess, like, at the end of the day, like, you can do what you want, like, I, I, you know what I mean? Like, that, if it's in the back, it's not as much of an issue community-wide as if it was on the front.
That's the message I got from the city council on our, on our project on Benita. They didn't care. And the guy's adding, you know, what, five thousand square feet? But you couldn't see it from the streets, so they didn't care.
Which one was, which one was that?
The guy that.
It was the.
Ninety-one Benita or whatever.
Big, flat, straight, front house.
What was the style, the split lot, or the?
We rejected him, and he went to the council.
He went, he reject, yeah, we rejected him, and he went to the council, and they overruled us. And which is essentially the backstory about why we're having this conversation here.
I mean. But, but that, but what you're describing is, is a secondary part of it, right? What you said is that every house should have to have an architect, design.
Well, I don't think at the smaller, I think it's burdensome at the smaller end of the spectrum.
But there's a way through that.
And I agree.
No, no, there's a way through that. And that's, and that's staff, okay? If, if, if I come to the city, and I wanna put a two-hundred-square-foot bump out on the back of my house, and if it's just nothing but absolutely flat ground with, with no trees, nothing in the area, a, a big deal. A contractor can do a design, a design build drawing very, very simply, follow prescriptive code. No problem at all. On the other hand, if a person comes, if a person comes in with, with wanting the same two-hundred-square-foot bump, but it's, it's underneath a specimen oak tree, and it's on a big, a big slope, and it's creating a drainage problem, staff should jump on it right there and say, sorry, pal, you, you need to, if you want it there, you could either move it, or if you want it there, you're gonna have to do this, you're gonna have to do this, and you're gonna have to do that, all right? The, the costs will go up depending on how many different kinds of technical issues really have to be met with what the person wants to do. It could, and, and his construction costs are gonna go, are, are going to be significantly way more too, if, if he wants to, if, if he wants to put the bump out there.
Sure, but that's also a third thing to discuss. That's still not the first thing, of even this two-hundred-square-foot bump out, you guys are saying needs an architect.
No, I didn't say that.
I didn't say that.
I said, I said on the larger.
It was binary, you guys said it needs to see an architect.
I, I just tried to give you the two examples of how.
Well, I understand, but, but that's not what, that's not, wait, that's not what's written. Look at what's written.
Nothing's written about having an architect now.
Right, and isn't that what you guys were proposing on the architect front? That you said everything runs smoother when you have an architect, your project goes so much smoother when you have an architect. It shouldn't come to city, it's wasting taxpayer dollars, because it hasn't gone through an architect before it comes to committee.
What I was saying was, what I'm saying is, that makes sense on the sliding, on the side of the scale that's larger. The project is larger, because those costs can be amortized.
And I don't disagree with that.
Those costs can be amortized over what you're spending, right? If you're spending half a million dollars on a two-thousand-square-foot addition, or a two-story whatever, like, you're pretty darn sure you should have an architect involved, cause it's gonna go way smoother. Like, your efficiencies you're gonna realize on something that's more complicated are, are real. But like, on the, on the lower end of the scale, like, the example Joe just gave, you know, I don't think it's necessary. I think somebody could do a competent job if it's just like a two-hundred-square-foot, or I would say even up to five-hundred-square-foot, if it's on the back, and it's, there isn't a lot of hair on it, as far as like oak trees and other issues. I don't think we should have that, I think that's a step too far.
When you get into.
To require that.
When you get into a lot of.
So it's kind of, it's not, it's not like a one fits all, it's kind of like this sliding scale, where I think projects would benefit from having a professional involved, versus like, at the lower end, you're not gonna realize the cost. Cause you're right, like, architects, like, I make, I make this discussion and this argument all the time, like, we make less than what you're gonna pay your Realtor to, to sell your house. Like, it's, it's crazy. And, and I'm not saying they don't work for their money, but like, relative to what an architect would do on a project, and they make less than what a Realtor does when they're selling a property, it's crazy, all right? But at the low end, there are minimum costs that a, a professional's gonna charge. It's just, it is what it is, you know, you're paying for all kinds of things, but, so like, at that level, it may not make sense, because you're gonna pay, you know, five to ten thousand dollars to have an architect design you a five-hundred-square-foot whatever, like, that's, like, you probably build it for less than a hundred thousand.
And that's the concern I have about.
Okay, so I realize that concern, and I'm saying at that level, it may not make sense. But moving up the scale, I think it makes total sense, because there's a lot of, lot more issues involved when you're building something bigger.
And we're talking about. And we're talking about administrative approval with twenty five hundred square feet. And I think quite honestly that we need to give staff the assistance so that they can make if we're going to give them the 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 right to make it administrative approval, which I'm totally comfortable with. Then we need to supplement that if you come in with a twenty five hundred square foot addition, it should be drawn by an architect.
And we we may.
Twenty five hundred over?
Yeah.
Yeah, we may need to put some language in there.
If it's gonna be administrative approval.
Is that twenty five hundred new work or?
Especially on new work.
Well, I think I don't know how it's written.
The arguments, the arguments are out there, the arguments are definitely out there a- about a- about, you know, complication and cost of architects and and all of that. But these a lot of these arguments wind up like they there's a belief that Home Depot and and big box stores have have promoted that everybody knows what they're doing and it's just not true, okay? The these people are arguing below the there there's the threshold really is set by the technical complication, the codes, the both the zoning and the building codes and so forth. And that in itself, some people will consider to be pretty burdensome, but it has to it has to be done, this is California. And we can't we we can't simplify to the point, I know it is, it is, it's California, okay? We can't simplify to the point where where we can absolve people of of having to be able to comply with all of this this stuff, I'm I'm sorry, you know.
But I mean, I also on the flip side, you know, being an architect but also a homeowner in town, like there is this whole, like, I want to be able to do a certain amount without having to jump through twenty billion hoops in California, like it's just nuts, you know, like I'm doing something tiny and I've gotta spend five grand to come before this commission, you know, to I think that's crazy, like.
That's why we have administrative review, yeah.
I know, I know, I I'm exaggerating the point.
So that's why I'm trying to get clarification on, are you saying that for all administer administrative review that it should have an architect?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna put a two hundred square foot addition onto my house. That's less than the twenty five hundred, it comes administral and I have to have an architect design that.
There's a lot of opportunities for problems with the two hundred square.
It was a yes or no question.
Yes.
I I don't agree with that.
I don't agree, I don't think the architects are on board with you.
I think at some at some point.
That's because the the one of the reasons why there are architects on this commission is because we have no other backstop for this.
I I don't, I think.
Bill and I aren't perceptive enough and don't have the language skills with about architecture in order to defend the city against terrible jobs. And we saw what happened tonight. We relied on the architects on this commission to keep that that building from happening.
Yeah, but but Bob, we all remember the canyon zone, the whole reason for revising the codes there was to make it so there wasn't a threshold that people had to come because there were so many one offs that every, I mean, every, I mean, property lines with a wall on it, we had a property where we had to make an exception to him not tearing, allowing him to tear down his garage to have an uncovered parking space because it was covered, but the wall was right on the property line. If you and and so we changed the code so it would make it easier, so that with administrative review, regardless of who designed it, that it wouldn't have to come before us because almost every project before that in the canyon ended up coming.
Canyon is full of terrible one offs, yes.
But I'm saying we changed the code to make it easier and less burdensome because remember there was a big moratorium, everybody was upset because there was houses that were historical and some there was a big project on a couple of the roads that was put on hold and they were kind of upset because we were waiting for this whole thing to get done before we could move forward and and but we made it less burdensome in the canyon. And I'd like to, I mean, I would like to do that with city, but I also don't want to make it so that again, they're wasting time designing somebody else's project from them.
We're in in the next five years, we're gonna lose a lot of control over our own cities. The state of California is dictating what will happen in cities.
Yeah, unfortunately, but.
So so your R one neighborhood that you live in is about to become an R three neighborhood because the state just passed a law that says your neighbors and you have a big property right behind you can throw in two more additional units, which is gonna impact your parking, a lot of things like that. And so my question to you is, do you want those additions to be done by somebody with a napkin or somebody who at least knows what they're doing?
Well, if you're putting a gun to my head and say I don't have a choice, I I don't really care.
The gun is already up to your head and it's been cocked.
I'll move, I mean, that my my choice would be I'm solid and moving as soon as as soon as the 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 contractors show up to start doing something like that.
Okay, but but you you you're gonna have to move out of California because it's a statewide law.
Sounds fine to me.
Okay, but but for the rest of but for the rest of us, but for the rest of us who want to be in this community and for the rest of us who want to enjoy this community and keep this community the way it is.
You're not going to. With that with that.
I would like to have, I would like to have some
It's not gonna be.
Mechanism in place to put pressure on applicants to at least try to conform to our community standards.
Well.
And right now, we're losing a lot of those and unless we enact something, we're gonna lose all that control and we're just gonna watch a lot of, I mean, there's nothing that says here that you can't put in cargo containers with doors on them.
Well.
Well, yeah?
Yes, there is.
Well.
Yeah, you tell me, you tell me how the code.
We've already had, we've already had one house go in town that came in on wheels, whoop, put in, total house.
Where was that? I haven't seen it, there was a trailer.
Auburn.
At what Adams, yeah. Came in in one day, one house, backed in, boom, done.
Well, that doesn't necessarily mean it's a bad house.
Ah. It doesn't.
Good prefect out there and modulars.
But what the good news is that it got some kind of review before it got arrived. We're gonna lose that unless we unless we have some standards, we're gonna lose that option.
Review because and I, you know, I agree with you, the horror of you painted of A D Us, but on the other hand, I really love them and the the opportunities they provide and they can be charming.
They can be.
They can be adorable.
And what will make them, what what will make them charming and adorable?
They need to be put in with love, but how do you legislate that?
Other than love, what what kind of criteria would you use to approve something like that?
It would depend on how big the house is.
How they were designed.
How they're designed, yeah.
And who designed them.
How do you legislate?
And who in the community designs?
I know, but all architects aren't good architects.
I will grant you that, but at least they're better than the guy with a napkin.
Well, but there's also a house on my on my street where someone backed in one of those trailers and it looked really cool, it's one of those little small house things. It's gone because it didn't meet the code. You couldn't back it, you couldn't have a a second unit on on that
Wheels.
On wheels that was sitting there. So I mean, it's not like we can't cut head that off in the past rather than just putting our hands up to what the state of California may or may not do in the future.
Well, they are, they're doing it. It's.
They're they're mandating that they're gonna take R ones and make them all.
That's happened already.
Mandating them them that they can be bigger by right and they can be closer to setbacks than than what we prescribe a new construction of that size and they can be taller.
So what's the point of even having our own municipal codes?
Exactly, because there's a housing crisis and they're gonna fix it by driving it down your throat. So how are you going, tell me how you're going to protect the community? Because you're, we're all sitting here to protect the community, that's our job.
Well.
Not the, not the developer, the community.
Well, it's it sounds paranoid, I mean, you've you've created an environment, you're saying it's a fait accompli, it's to elect new officials and get them kicked out of government and get rid of the people that have that have made have mandated this crap.
I'm not working on the state level, I'm working in Sierra Madre.
Well, it doesn't really matter, I mean, just say, oh, we want superior designs, all you're gonna do is say, okay, you're gonna up the cost for somebody and only the people with the most money are gonna be able to do this then. That's what you're, that's really what you're arguing. Because it's gonna take, you're gonna cut, it's gonna be.
Is it gonna cost more money? Yes, it will cost more money.
Right, so it's gonna be more cost per hectare to make make us more intensely living on top of each other. And you're saying the only only thing, the only way we can do is to sort of make it plan so it's not so it's it's a better design than we would have for this community than we would have if we had less designs or no design.
There's always, there's always a cheaper way to do things and they're the people that are gonna turn around and argue that you're making me
Correct.
Spend more money.
Correct.
But there's always a cheaper way to do things and that's not where we want to be at.
Well, but.
You wanna be surrounded by the cheapest houses that can be built?
Well, you you but you're bringing up something for design review with standards that were in triggers that you you've already just made it sound like, well, we don't have any choice then.
We probably don't.
Okay, but it's not, I'm not suggesting a binary solution where if you want to put a hundred square feet onto your house that you have to go get an architect to do it. Even the architects have said they don't need a to do a one hundred square foot addition.
I think I think the impact and I don't know how how many ways I can state it, but I think the impact of an architect, yes, at any scale is the way we're trained is is to look at even something as small as this versus something as big as this room. How can we improve that, make it better, make it as efficient as we can? This is all part of the training, it's just like if you're a firefighter, you're trained in a certain way of like protect property, life safety, you know, like you you have your marching orders and that's how you're trained, like. Our training is, we don't go into something, whether it's this small or this big and go, how can we make it worse or less efficient or like I had a client ask me the other day and they're not my client anymore, but but basically they were asking me, well, can't you just bang out a plan and just like make it like as cheap as you can and just kind of like figure it out, we just just need something like. And right away I knew, I go, I cannot literally do that because all my training is like to look at the problem and figure out how to make it better. Like, you know, whether it's at a hundred square feet or a hundred thousand square feet, you know, like, so, yes, there are by having architect involved, there there will be improvements, okay? And we can argue like there are bad ones, there are good ones, whatever. That that is what it is, but but at the same time, we carry insurance, we're 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 liable if something goes wrong on the project, designers are not, you know, like they can design you a crap thing that leaks and 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 walk away, basically, right? And it's not a scare tactic, but we're held to a higher standard by the state of California, like we have to have a license. And and we have to have business practices and everything else that goes with being an architect. But point being, I think at the low scale, you're hearing me say no because for what you're gonna pay for that service, it may it may not benefit the project. And that's that's a personal thing. Sure, it'll benefit the community, like it'll look better, whatever, but I don't think that should be the homeowner's burden at a at the low scale. Like I think at some point you have to be like, you know what? You can do what you want to do, like it's five hundred square feet, like if it's a five hundred square foot eyesore, then it is what it is and we're gonna have some of that, you're gonna have some of that. It's not like every property is gonna be this jewel pristine beautiful thing, like it's part of the eclectic nature of living in this town, like there's good, bad and ugly, like, right, like, so.
No, no, that's what the what the councils ask us to discuss.
Yeah, but I don't think we can legislate and say, you know, you owe the community really good design for a two hundred square foot addition, like to me, that's just like at some point, we're trying to police and see everything and make sure like I get where Bob's coming from, but I think the benefit for that involvement increases dramatically as a project gets bigger and more complex. So I don't know what that line in the sand is.
Value is, I, yeah, and I and I don't disagree with that, I.
So that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Yeah.
Okay, and and I think architects should move, I don't know what that's, I mean, just anecdotally thinking, like, to me, something that's tacked on like five hundred square feet and up up is like starts to have some significance. And I think of two projects recently, I think of the one that came tonight and the one recently, it was, I think it was on Santa Anita or down there where the designer did all the hand drawings, but it was the addition in the back, pretty much the same as kind of this scenario. And it wasn't insignificant in terms of the area, I think she, that owner was adding on a thousand, was it on Rancho or was it Santa Anita? I don't remember, but.
It was all in Chinese, though, I remember.
Yeah, but you remember it was it was like a thousand square feet or something similar to this project, but both had designers. And to me, both of these projects were not insignificant in terms of size. Sure, they were at the rear or whatever, but even that one, they were doing stuff to the front. You know, changing kind of the profile, the roof and the street, you know, there was improvements being made and to me, like that was a threshold where if they had an architect involved, it would have it would have made this go easy, uh, more smoothly and they would have not had to come back multiple times, like that one, I think on the second time, we basically said, well, you know, make these changes and then I think I looked at him or Joe and I on a subcommittee and kind of said, okay, that you did everything, you know. And that's another vehicle, like maybe there's a way to kind of like you know, do that, but.
I don't think that's right, that that you guys should work for free.
No, I get that.
If we put an administrative design review in for the smaller projects, which we haven't defined what they are yet, how but the smaller ones. And if we have a design guidelines, this town doesn't have one of those cutie cutesy little books with design guidelines and all the little drawings like, you know, eaves should match and, you know, windows should match, it's it's very clear, it's like it's a how to for how to create a cute little conforming sort of addition.
That's part of our problem, that's part of our problem, which is why we want, which is why we want architects on this, because you're our backstop.
And so, yeah, if we if we had something like that, that would really help your job, I think you could just point to the book and say, something like this, right?
No, that would never fly here.
Yeah, I it.
I don't think that would fly here.
I don't think that works very well, I've had that in the past. We have that somewhat with the Stonegate projects. And we can point and choose and it's very high level. Just also, just to bring the conversation back, this is we're really getting into a policy discussion that should be coming from council. And they have not had that conversation either, this is something that we can always always pose for council to considerate, to consider in the future, but that wasn't what was presented for consideration this evening, but it is a worthwhile discussion, we've had these discussions in the past and have not made that decision. And we could always make that recommendation for council consideration.
So what's your interpretation?
Well, we still haven't done the, we, this is the threat, the thresholds, we still have to do the findings, there's two parts to this discussion.
There is and and I I typically, when once we start at looking at ordinances or working at looking at these policy discussions or modifications, we know it's gonna take quite some time. I think we should spend a little bit more time here or it's up to the chair to move on or table the discussion for later time.
We we are not, excuse, we're not, hold on one second, we we are not, what we're talking about here, okay, I don't think even has to do with with thresholds. This is this is policy having to do with 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 what we get involved with and what we don't as a as a planning commission, I think they, you know, the what kind of findings may, that may pertain more to what you're all talking about tonight, but there's they, again, I believe that they, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that what the council is is looking for is for us not to to be spending so much time tying projects up based on aesthetic opinions to to begin with. And I I just want to say one last thing here about, you know, that project on Benita. We shouldn't really be offended as much as we don't like the outcome at the city council. I don't think we should have been be offended at all by what the council did because when that project was before us, we did exactly what we were supposed to do with it, right? It's it's up to the and and we and we really did exactly what we were supposed to do based on the zoning ordinances and.
Which is why they're coming back to us to be redone.
The the council, the the council can exercise the the broad opinion based.
That's why I go back, we have the, we have the power to annoy, we will not we will not persevere. I mean, we can, we can go at this, but we are not gonna win.
So so something I'd like to point out is that we previously spent a lot of time working on the commercial zone and then pushed it up to council and council said, well, we haven't made our findings or our policy determinations on this and eventually it'll make its way back to us. And the work that we done has kind of been shelved and sidelined, so what I don't want to do is put the cart before the horse again. If we're going to make some determinations here or recommendations rather and they get pushed up to the council and the council decides that they need to make a policy decision.
But this came from council. This was a request from council.
But but what specifically was the request? I mean, if we change the the thresholds, we're making determinations on who comes before us or not. So what is the?
It has to go before the city council for.
It has to go before the city council for adoption. We're, we're seeing if these thresholds are working.
The, I think where this is going is, they want to capture more projects for review, ultimately. Whether it's an A, administrative design review or a design review, like, that's reading between the red lines. Like, I think it's...
Actually, I, I'm not sure that that's what they want. I think what they want is they, is they want us to fall on the sword so that they don't have to make a decision. And I think we've been given a very astute and clever solution to some of our problems. Because council said, we don't like the way you're doing it, do it somewhere, do it another way. And we're looking at two options. One is to look at thresholds a different way, and then another to look at findings the other way. I think the Benita one was, was findings.
Findings.
But I think that this is an opportunity for us to reexamine thresholds and make life actually move faster. Because if we, if we allow more administrative reviews, then things will proceed faster. My concern is that we give staff the right tools so that the administrative review does not have to take forever in a day because it comes in, in a poorly packaged manner. Because part of what I, part of the thing that I'm working for is I'm working for the city government as well because I want it to work well and to do a, a good job and still save the citizens money. And I believe that if, at the counter, yeah, you can come in with your 200 square foot addition and they can help you, but if you're coming in for something that needs an administrative, you, you want an administrative review because we, we're empowering them to do that, that it should come in at a certain level. And we are not, by the way, the city of Sierra Madre is not very onerous in this regard. You can go to San Marino or Acadia or our neighboring cities, and they make you jump through flaming hoops that are really tall.
Go to Pasadena.
Go to Pasadena. We are actually really nice, which is, bothers me to some degree because that's why we get some goofy projects, and that's why we see some goofy stuff in town. Because we weren't, we didn't hold people to a high enough standard.
Now, I'd like to make a recommendation. I don't know if this will fly from, from your perspective, but talking about what level things come in at, right? You have planners on your staff. You know that, that if, if there had been a preliminary review, okay, staff was working with the people who are in here tonight. If your building official had been part of that review along with the planner, we wouldn't have had to go through most of this tonight because the building, the building official could have nailed most of what we were, we spent all evening talking on. There, there are other cities where you go through a joint review, including, including building, including planning, including economic development, including the fire department, and there are a lot of things that are nailed right, right in the beginning. We don't, we don't do that, but...
Only, only for larger projects.
And, and that's why I asked about how much is pending. Because in a little while, they're gonna be, they're gonna receive a lot of these things.
If there were either an architect like, like Miss Dallas was talking about, or you were able to get our building official to be part of the staff process leading up to a planning commission presentation, we wouldn't be going through most of this.
So, what we do currently is the plans are routed to fire, to public works, but not to the building official. So, that's an internal change that we were talking about, staff was talking about actually today, to get comments from building to see if the project is even going to be feasible or if they can identify potential problems. So, we will make that change, and we'll get comments that would appear, or hopefully, they're addressed before they come to the planning commission.
But that's more staff time.
It, it is.
And that, and, and the citizens are paying for that, and I would rather see that being picked up by the person who is coming in with the project. Because quite honestly, we're building their project for them. And as much as, you know, I don't, I don't like giving away the city's resources. We don't have enough money as it is now to do the basic things we do, and for, for us to do other people's work for them, I find offensive.
Well, here's another question.
One way or another, it should be, as you said, at a level when it comes to us.
Right. Well, here's a question, though, like, and using just the earlier case as an example, like, if that had been an administrative design review, it's possible what staff would've found troublesome with the project may not have been the same things that we found. Like, like, we're just saying, well, at that level, staff can review it and kind of like, that probably, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but probably would've come across as an approvable project. But like, we raised issues that were related to the tree and the proximity of that, but the arborist report said it was fine, like, like, so like, like, would we be missing things that you, you might catch things that, and be okay with it or not okay with it, but that we would find different things? So then, how do we reconcile that?
On this particular project, staff had met with the, the applicant who's not the property owner. I don't know who the property owner is, we've never met them. We didn't meet with the arborist. It's always through a project manager, not even the designer entirely. It's the project manager. Multiple times, and it, it was basically pulling teeth to get all the relevant information before the commission.
How many hours did that take? Just ballpark.
Forty-five minutes an hour at the counter, multiple times. Telephone calls, that might last as long, is what I've heard on the phone. So, when we made a, a recommendation to move this forward, I was expecting the planning commission. We knew there were issues with it, and I needed a higher authority to be able to convey that information because they're not listening to us any longer.
So, you went through that process that could've saved a lot of headaches so that this would've been presented as Bob was trying to say, ready to go? And that wasn't done because, so is there some way we could help by making a suggestion that, so that we can change the process so that they require a project, project manager?
What, what I...
Require a project manager so that you have, the requirement is that these people come to you and they know who, one person has to present.
But what, Vince was saying...
Do you ever just tell people that, that know you, I'm not letting you come to the commission yet?
Yes, we do that.
They do that.
And with the Stonegate projects, we actually have redesigned quite a bit of them with the architects and spending a lot of time before they get here.
With, with the who, Vince?
With, with Stonegate.
With, no, but who are you spending a lot of time with?
With architects.
Okay.
And, uh, yes, trying to get a better project.
They're not gonna build R3 projects up in Stonegate.
But, I mean, I, I think, I'm not, I'm trying to get away from the architect thing and, and trying to focus on like, what, what concerns me about the thresholds and changing some of them to administrative is, I have no doubt staff's gonna do a great job and spend tons of time on it, you know, pulling teeth or whatever, but the prospect of them finding certain issues that would be not what we would find, you know? And so, there's a disconnect, like, would I rather have that project come here so that those, those concerns can be vetted and, and discussed? Yes, because what happens is, tonight's project, like, potentially, obviously, there were issues, but there may be projects that go through, based on other circumstance that we...
I think that we're looking, I think we're looking for the opposite. I don't think we're saying, like, a project tonight, we're not lowering those thresholds. We're actually saying that below the 2,500, where it's by right today, there would be some thresholds, like, say from 500 to 2,499, it's a ministerial review. And it has to be done by an architect.
So, to answer that, I feel like, okay, I'm just using numbers, but like, 500, that seems small, right? But when you start getting to 2,499, like, to me, that's a substantial project, you know? So, like, that administrative review would be, the threshold would be lower. Does that make sense? Like, we would see stuff, like, if, like, 2,000 is a big project to me, like, an addition of 2,000 square feet.
Bigger than my first house.
You know, it's bigger than both of my houses.
But, so, but, so this goes back to my initial question that, that I brought up. Has the city council put this before us so that we will put more stuff through ministerial review? Or have they put this before us because they want us to lower the threshold so that there's less review? I don't have a clear understanding, and if it's been put forth to us from council and they want us to act on something, it seems like we should have a pretty clear understanding on what it is that they're asking us to act on.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed.
That's a good question.
They're gonna play their cards differently, and they're gonna, they're always gonna want to say, well, this is what the planning commission did, but we're gonna overrule them because they're elected and we're not.
I think they want to limit the amount of review, actually, by staff and commission review.
They want to limit both?
I, I would, I would, well, I think the thresholds that we have already established, I think they're speaking for them, shouldn't be, but are comfortable with that level of review. What we're talking about is now adding additional...
Layers?
Layers to the process.
Well, how much of what they're asking for is, really is in the, the area of policy, like, how much design we should really get involved in? Because that takes, that, that takes time. That, that in itself, just, you know, the, the aesthetic, aesthetic part of, of review, are they looking to swelch that, or what?
Codebase.
More objective.
And more objective.
So, does that mean that we need, does that mean that they're looking for us to align the different zones to our existing thresholds? Or they're looking for us to change our thresholds and align to those changed thresholds?
I think to align overall the thresholds so they're more consistent.
Between zones.
Between zones.
So, I noticed that there's no recommended changes in R1, which would lead somebody to think that a 20... Which is the largest zone. So, the 2,500 square foot number seems to be a fine, a fine number, and one could infer that they want that number aligned throughout the other zones? Is that...
I would, I would, as a responsible planning commissioner, though, recommend that things under 25,000 have administrative review because that's our only chance to, you know, when you start flowing in.
And I understand that, and that's why I'm asking, I'm trying to tease this out.
Coming from council, that is not coming from council.
Okay, is, when you said that council wants less review, is that from the commission or from staff?
That is staff's opinion.
But for both, both parties. Less review from both parties.
The focus of the council direction was really more focused on the findings.
Right. We haven't gotten to findings, we're still at thresholds.
No, but I noticed a certain finding that disappeared.
Yes, and that's...
We know exactly where this is going, number eight.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, I'm waiting, we haven't even gotten to the hard part yet. We're doing the easy part now, by the way.
Okay, so, I guess, so, so that's what I'm trying to understand.
That's good, that's good. I think, I think for this, this threshold thing, I actually think, um, I don't think there should be less review. I think if anything, um, the review is adequate at this, these thresholds, but that at some of the lower, I think there should be more review for some of the, at administrative level.
Or higher standards for what they're reviewing. Because we believe that if they come in at a higher standard, and there can be less review because it comes in and doesn't need everybody and his mother to sign off on it because someone with a license actually did it.
Well, no, I agree with that, but, but, but to the threshold point, I think, I would disagree with that, that direction, I guess.
Okay.
Meaning like, the, introducing less review, I think's a bad idea, all right? But at the same time, I don't want to introduce, go overboard and introduce more hoops at, at the lower level. Does that make sense? So, like, there's, I think there's, like, I don't think we should have less review than what we already have. I think streamlining it also doesn't necessarily make sense because you have to look at, like, R1 is a huge chunk of our zone, right? And you look at R2, and you just mimic those findings, those thresholds. I don't know if that makes sense, because there's all of maybe like 40 lots or 50 lots. I don't know, it's just this light gray. There are very few R2. Like, I think you have to look at that as its own thing and see what's appropriate because those lots are more conventional, you know? And same with Canyon, like, just to translate, like, I don't know if in some of those Canyon lots, you can build something bigger than 200 square feet. So, you would never see any of those projects because they'd be all 2,000 square feet and of right, right? But you have, you have different idiosyncrasies up there that may require those thresholds to be lower. Does that make sense? So, I don't know if looking at it all, like, streamlined with the same thresholds makes any sense.
I have a question about thresholds.
I think...
Sorry.
I was just gonna point out that the residential Canyon Zone for new construction has a requirement that the lot has to be a minimum of 15,000 square feet.
A new lot?
A, a new, new construction. Brand-new construction.
So, you cannot build anything up there?
On a vacant parcel. Has to be 15,000 square feet, so...
So, even if some houses got burned down tomorrow, the lot's too small?
No, you can rebuild those.
You can rebuild what was there, but you can't...
You'd have to buy three lots, four lots, five lots, probably.
All right, can I ask my question now? So, I've got a, I've got a lot, I'm gonna knock down an old house. I'm going to build a primary res, I'm designing a primary residence that's 2,100 square feet. And, and then I'm going to also, at the same time, design a, an ADU under AB68, and I'm gonna go to the max there of 800, and...
That's 1,200.
Okay, so now I'm, so now I'm, I'm up to 20, I'm up to 2,900 square feet. I've exceeded the 2,500 square foot threshold, but do I have to go to design review? Or do I, do I skate by on that because my main house is under 2,500?
I'll break that down in a couple of parts. If you came in and demolished an existing structure on a lot and replaced it, replace that with a 2,100 square foot, you go straight to plan check. There's no staff-level review other than whether it meets zoning requirements. Currently, I have, because ADUs are supposed to be approved ministerially. So, we've come up with this very same scenario, and I wrote an administrative interpretation that if your existing structure, say it's 2,499 square feet, and you wanted to put in an ADU that triggered the design review requirement, but it's below the overall gross floor area, that would be approved at the staff level because it's supposed to be approved ministerially. We are rewriting our ADU ordinance. Deputy City Attorney Alex is actually working on that now. We looked, we spent quite some time on it yesterday as well, and we're, we're talking about some of these issues. And that's also written into the code, that it still has to be approved ministerially even if it triggers the design review threshold. But if it's below gross floor area, it does not come to the commission.
That are two separate applications.
Yeah, that's what you do.
All I'm, my perception is that I'm looking at a lot of change in the community based on what's going on.
Yes.
And that, we don't have a lot of tools in our tool chest to control those changes. And at some point in time, we're gonna wake up and the community's gonna look a lot different.
There are a number of cities, I, I was gonna report on this later, but I'll mention it now, that there are a number of cities from the, the League of California cities that are, are preparing, not through them, but just themselves, are preparing a lawsuit. And, and they're going to challenge AB68 in court. and, and they're going to challenge AB 68 in court. There's-
I don't doubt it. I don't doubt it. And I, I mean, and there's cities like San Marino that have more money than God that can throw money at this thing. But in the little city of Sierra Madre, what do we have to at least make, have some control over what happens inside our town? And so, I'm looking at ways in which we can empower our staff efficiently, so that they're not spending all their time hand-holding people who are not good at what they're doing in terms of building. I object to paying them money to do that. I would rather have them spending their time doing administrative reviews of things that they, we can control for this city.
I'm in agreement with you about, about that. There is, there's no excuse for the sort of thing that we, we saw, we shouldn't have had to be hand-holding that guy, and it has nothing to do with aesthetics, it has nothing to do with anybody's design opinion, it just has to do with, I think what the council-
How would you fix that?
Wants us to do is, is technical competence. That's, that's all we talked about tonight. We didn't have to, we didn't have to talk about design, okay? We didn't have to talk about aesthetics.
We'll get to that when we get to the findings part.
Yeah. So I guess, I guess we're, so, as we, yeah, that's, that's exactly where I was coming to. So I think that there's been some very passionate conversation on this, and I think everybody brings very divergent viewpoints to it, which is exactly why they put together a, a group like us. I think that we should all go to our separate corners and give some more thought to, to this, you know, I, I think that we've all had some, some good counterpoints to think about here, and maybe come back at, carry this over to the next meeting, with the goal of bringing recommendations as to what these thresholds might be, so that we can discuss it then.
I have one addition that we should think about. We had this discussion amongst ourselves. We're a public body, normally when we vote on things, we hear from the public. We did hear no public input on this.
Commissioner Spears, if I could mention, so, if this was, if today we were going to provide a recommendation to council, in that case, it would have to be noticed for 10 days and it'd be a public hearing.
Correct.
But because this is just a conversation among the commission, there is no public hearing requirement.
Requirement.
Right, so that's-
In the city of Sierra Madre, as you're aware, the public likes to be involved, and we have a number of people who make it their goal in life, they circle this date on their calendar, and they're here for a lot of, of our, of our discussions. And I would like to think that, that we should at least hear from some of them, because they're the ones that are going to be impacted, and in, in all honesty, we do speak for them.
Which is another reason to carry this over to the next meeting and continue this conversation, and in the interim, solicit feedback from your neighbors and your friends and compatriots, people at Starbucks, or Bean Town, or Lucky B's, or wherever it is that you strike up these kinds of conversations, the, the drop-off line, and, and come back with some, some feedback, some informed opinions from the public, and encourage people to go and look at this agenda packet online, and come and sit in our gallery and talk to us, and give us the guidance that we need from the community as to what it is that the community wants.
And can we ask also that staff, since, since the time that, the event that triggered the request, law in California has changed. And with the new mandate, mandated laws coming into effect, now we have some, it's, it's a slightly different landscape. I mean, we're looking at the possibility of, of people building houses that we didn't always have, that we may not be able to have total say over what's the development. And I'd like to look at some of this in light of that.
Right. Actually, Deputy City Attorney Gary Gosian and I were talking about that, and he made the offer at an upcoming meeting to actually provide a PowerPoint presentation or presentation to share some of the changes in the housing bills that were just signed by the governor last month. So that is something we were planning on doing.
Good. Is that something that we can listen to in conjunction with this conversation? I mean, how soon can, like, we hear this presentation?
I think as it pertains to ADUs, because there are five separate ADU laws that are in play, if the commission would like, and if, if the agenda allows, we, I can probably present that at the next meeting, with respect to ADUs. With the remaining housing bills, maybe in January.
Yeah, at least the ADUs, because the, people have the right now to build on property that they didn't a month ago. And some of that is going to impact these decisions.
So if specific to ADUs, what will be occurring is, because we have to pass an urgency ordinance, the bills were signed on October 9th by the governor. City Attorney's Office had time, had to have time to digest the 18 bills, five of which pertain specific to ADUs. We're in the process of preparing an urgency ordinance. That is calendared before city council on December 10th.
Yeah, that's going to happen whether, before, without coming to us.
Right. So basically, what will occur here is we're going to have a presentation, basically a discussion, an update of what those, what those bills are directing.
Well, will it require us to change any of our zoning codes?
It will certainly require us to change the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, the second unit ordinance, to be in compliance. And it, it could require additional changes. Certainly, density bonus could be, definitely, we're going to have to update the ordinance for density bonus. We probably all should, also should have a discussion regarding, and this is another policy issue, because we don't have an inclusionary housing ordinance. Should we look into adopting an inclusion, inclusionary housing policies for larger developments by percentage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So do we need a motion to carry this over, or can we just carry it over?
We can, it's a discussion item, we can continue it on to an agenda that is going to be able to accommodate a, a further lengthy discussion about this, and also the findings.
Thank you. Would anybody like to come before us and speak on anything that was not covered tonight by agenda?
We scared them.
Anyone, anyone.
I'm a little scared. All right, Planning Commissioner reports.
Starting at one end. I have nothing, no.
No, I'm not sure, that would be-
I have, I have three items.
You saw this.
One was about AB 68, and that I mentioned that there's a, a lawsuit being worked up right now on that. I was having a conversation today with a colleague who is involved at the state level with AIA and with housing issues at Sacramento, and he just said to me, well, you know, the bottom line is that the state is out to kill R1. There will be no, there will be no more R1, if the, if the state has its, its way. Anyway, the other, the other two items I wanted to mention, one is that the Japanese-American museum in Los Angeles has an interest in our 305 East Laurel. It's a little, it's a little house that is on the, the local register, and the, the reason is, and the reason it was designated many years ago is because the people who live there had sheltered Japanese-American Sierra Madre citizens at the outset of World War II, until they were all, all hauled off. I got into a discussion with, with an old Japanese-American man last week, and I met at a party, and, and he was like, connected to the museum, and he said, we want to, we want to know about that, that story. So, I, I, right at the moment, I'm getting together some of our old materials from the designation, and hopefully also from oral history at the-
Cool.
At the Preservation Society, Historic Preservation Society, and, and we'll see what we can put together on, on that one. Last thing, I just want to mention that, sad to say that Barry Gold passed away earlier this week, I don't know if you knew about that or, or not, he had been hit by a, hit by a, a van a few weeks ago, I guess.
In town, or?
No, I, I don't know where it was, but he was, Monday this week, he died of his, his injuries, and so, I'd like to mention that because he was a real stand-up guy for what he, what he believed about our design and our environmental issues here, and I'm sure the guy's really going to be missed. So anyway, there's a, I, I just saw something today about it, and I, I guess his, his funeral is going to be tomorrow, and it's going to be at Forest Lawn, so there, you know, I don't know if anything else will happen here in town or, or not, but sorry to, sorry to see him go.
Monday is Veterans Day, so seek out a veteran and thank them for their service, it's important. There will be a ceremony at the, at the cemetery, and I don't remember when, but it's an important day.
All right. Staff, any staff reports?
Just wanted to, to mention regarding the Stonegate project, Lot 7, which was at the very top of the hill, the 3.2 acre large lot, which was approved by the commission, appointed a subcommittee, and that project was reviewed by Manish, and so, project is done. It came out pretty good.
Yeah, it looked good. Made all the changes.
Yeah, cool. We have the plans, if you want, we can pass them on down if you wanted to take a look at them. Monday is a holiday, so we are closed on Monday, City Hall. We do have two additional Stonegate projects coming back on the November 21st, first meeting. One of them was the continued item, which was Lot 25, 600 Baldwin Court, right off of Baldwin Court and Carter, the Craftsman home. So, we're going to be taking a look at that, and we're going to be looking at another first review of one Nathaniel Terrace, or Lot 9. So, two projects, hopefully one won't take too long, but the other one, I would imagine, will spend some time on, as typically is the case on these projects.
Oh, boy.
And then, there's the opportunity for a, a brief presentation regarding the housing bills from our Deputy City Attorney.
I, I think we should get that earlier rather than later, because it's going to take us some time to digest how that is going to impact the community.
When, when would you like?
Monday.
The next, the next meeting is November 21st, so we'll have to squeeze some time in there. It's, we do have full agenda.
You know, it's-
Worst, worst case, we can decide not to cover it then, right? As long as we agendize it?
We can do that.
It's as you drive around town now, and you look at large lots, it should be something that goes in the back of your head. I mean, there's a, there's a large lot on Orange Grove, that they've, they wanted to split before, and now they're working on the, on that lot, and every time I go by there, I'm thinking, hmm.
That lot is, that house is for sale again.
Mm-hmm. They just dropped price.
They dropped that project.
It's for sale.
See, would be, that would be, you know, a shoe-in for that.
All right. Any, any other business come before the council? We're adjourned.
Hit it.
Yes.